Virtually that would like to speak also, there's a mechanism to sign up virtually so we can hear your comments. Thanks. But it still hurts a little bit. The body just needs time to heal. Councilman Fahad, a few minutes to get. Oh, he's on Zoom. Oh, okay. Hey, I forgot you did tell me you were on Zoom. Looking over here and missing you. Are we all set then? One, everyone that needs to be online is online?
Yes.
Call the roll, please.
Yes, Mayor Murray Mitchell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jackie Bravo.
Here.
Councilman George Santin.
Here.
Councilman Walter Fett.
Here.
Councilman Victor Bassett.
Here.
All right, thank you. All rise if you are able to and join us for the pledge of, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, I want to welcome everyone that's here with us tonight and those of you that are joining us virtually to our city council workshop on parking and the parking study that's been done for us. So we're going to get started first with public comments. Why is there anyone signed up for public comments? Okay. Last chance, if anyone wants to make public comments, would you like to? Okay, sign up here. Quickly, so we have your name. And you. And if there's anyone listening virtually and they want to sign up to make some public comments, three minutes, up to three minutes, please do so now. Thank you. Okay, Noel Gonzalez, let's, let me just explain public comments. You have up to three minutes to address this. We're all ears. We don't respond. We're just listening, okay?
Okay, good. Thank you for the opportunity. I didn't really have anything prepared to say. I just wanted to come because I read over the parking survey this morning. I was just looking over it. I want to commend the surveyors. I think it was really detailed and had a lot of really good information. I basically agree with the assessment that currently we have ample parking for the residents. I know that may change in the future. It looks like we might have a deficit when departments open up and new businesses. And I really wanted to say that while I agree with most of their assessments, especially, I think, making it easier, more pleasurable for pedestrians to be able to get from these parking spaces that are further away to get more to the heart of downtown. When I'm commuting, I drive, I walk, I bike, I do all three. So I feel like I have a good perspective on all three experiences. I really never have trouble finding parking as long as I'm willing to walk a block or two, which I always am. I do think that the problem comes when you have situations on the circle, which is really unsafe for pedestrians. And I think that's where a lot of people's hesitation, you know, they could park really easily on Westward to go to Starbucks. That's not a far walk, but is it a safe walk? I, I would argue in many cases it's not. So I would like to see more emphasis on pedestrian safety, making it not just safer, but like more pleasurable to walk that distance. You're not dodging cars, you're not, you know, going in and out of traffic, basically enforcing the speed limit, making it more difficult for people to cut through when they're not driving into Springs to actually, because they live there or because they want to go to a business there. And just making it safer for people to walk, to get around. I'd love to see, you know, our children be able to walk across the circle park to go to Starbucks or to go wherever without being afraid of getting hit by a car. Right now, that's not a possibility. I try to bike on the circle. It's scary. So, and, and I'm a person who's willing to walk far to park because I understand that during those high traffic hours, the high use hours, it just makes sense. You can't always park right in front of a business. People are willing to walk very far when they park at the mall. I don't know why they're not willing to park, like to walk three blocks when it's their own city. So, so I just want to say that was, that was my main takeaway from the survey. I do agree with most of what they said, but I especially want to say that I agree with the emphasis on making the experience for pedestrians better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we don't have anyone virtually signed up? Okay. All right, so we will start the discussion on the parking study. And I guess the best way to have, to do this is to have our esteemed TA, THA consulting group start it off.
Do a brief introduction and then hand it over to Vicky. My name is Jim Zula. I'm the president of THA Consulting. We are a parking planning consulting firm that's obviously specialized in parking. And wanted to say, first of all, it's been an honor to work with, you know, your staff here. It's been really, really helpful to us. I don't mean to stand in front of you here. Or I'm going to turn it over to Vicky Galliano, who is our director of parking planning and studies. And I just want to say, we really recognize how important this study is and how moving the parking system forward is to, you know, this great community because the amount of time I've spent here and Vicky spent more, you know, it really is a special community. And I think some of the, you know, obviously things that you'll see, we believe very, you know, strongly, they will help. But again, this has also been a draft, so we're also here, you know, the input we, you know, just heard is very, very helpful as well. So thank you again. With that, I'm going to give it to Vicky.
Thank you, Mayor Mitchell. Who is putting up the PowerPoint? You are. Okay, perfect. And so we did put together almost like an executive summary of the parking study, which hopefully you all had a chance to review. And so hopefully this will just give everybody in the room who hasn't read the report, a good, you know, executive summary of some of the comments.
Can we turn the lights just a little bit so that it'll get a little easier? And I think it'll show up better on the screen for those watching. Thank you. That's good.
Next, please. So to start, I just wanted to go through a little bit of the timeline of what has, you know, transpired. So this RFQ was actually issued in October of 2022. As you know, that was on the end of the pandemic and so we were coming back. And so we rewarded it in January. We had a kickoff meeting. We talked a little bit about.
Can you put?
Sorry.
Microphone play.
Better, okay. We talked a little bit about everything that's going on. And during that kickoff meeting, we originally planned to come back April of that year and do our occupancy counts. But we were informed that these development projects that were underway might be wrapping up. And so if we could push it back, that would be ideal because then we could capture actual demand from these development projects that were taking place. So we pushed it back five months. So we intended to do it in April. We said, look, we can do it in September. And so that was our plan. We opened our online survey in August. We came back in September to do our accounts on the weekday and the weekend. We also held a public workshop when we were here in town. We closed that survey September 29th, 2023 with 495 responses, which is a great, great, great response, one of the best I've ever had in a parking study. We then issued the draft report that everybody has reviewed on December, and now we are here today to go over those findings and let everybody know what we found. So we had essentially a few main goals here. The first one is, is there enough parking to meet the demand today? Today being 2023, when we did our occupancy counts. Will there be enough parking to meet demand in the future as the development projects are completed and occupied? Looking at the public meeting and the stakeholder input, both as the physical public meeting as well as the online survey. And then providing occupant management and operational recommendations to the city on what improvements can be made to maximize the efficiency of your parking resources. Next. This is the study focus area and where we really concentrated all of our time and efforts. Everything within here is approximately a five-minute walk to the circle. So that's considered a pretty decent level of services, which just mentioned earlier in the comments is that it is a short walk. It's not long. In some areas, you have a better sightlines than others, but this is a pretty confined area. Next. So looking at the public parking inventory, there are just under 450 public parking spaces within that focus area. Seventy-two percent of those are on street and the other 28% are in five of the parking lots that are notated in that map in orange. Next, please. This is a slightly larger map of that study area so that you can see all of the parking areas that were included in this study for public parking. Next. Our counts that we took place, we counted them on Thursday for three different time periods. The morning period between eight and 10, another time at lunch between 11:30 and 1:30, and again during the evening from five to seven. We did similar accounts on the weekend at Saturday, again in the morning, a little bit later from nine to 11, during the lunch hour from 12 to two. And again, a little bit later in the evening for dinner from six to eight. During all of these counts, the largest demand occurred during the weekday lunch hour period with 273 cars parked in those public parking spaces in the study area. Next.
To the chair, I'm sorry. The chart that we just went over, does that also include the expectation of the town center and businesses that we currently have, or this is just as is right now?
This is as is when we were doing our counts last September.
Thank you.
So for the current parking conditions, is there enough parking to meet demand today? There is an existing surplus of parking within the study focus area. So I will look at all of the parking in the focus area. There is a 114 space surplus during the weekday lunch and a 224 space surplus during the weekend lunch period. Now, I do want to qualify that with, there is an existing perceived parking shortage because the most desirable parking locations are heavily utilized, being those right at the circle. So we do have a lot more people coming and parking there. We also know that most of the users in Miami Springs are used to parking within a block. And when you have that on top of more people, it feels tighter and like there's less parking. And then on top of that, we have additional traffic congestion circulating around this circle, which means the time that it's taking you to circle the block a couple of times to find that parking space that's going to be opened up is even longer. Next. These are the four projects that were provided to us by the city. We received all the program information and we used our parking demand models to estimate the impact of these four development projects will have on the city once open and complete. The model is then compared against their supply to determine their overall impact. So again, we used a model and their land use types to estimate what their parking demand will be, compared it against their additional supply to understand their overall impact. And then we took of the, each of these four projects and combined them together to determine the overall impact in the study focus area. The biggest thing here is that we are looking from a peak hour shift from that weekday daytime to actually the weekday evening is going to be higher at 35 space shortage. And this is because we're getting additional residential and restaurants. And those will bring in additional people during these evening hours for dinner services.
Say that again, the.
The peak hour?
Yes, with the, the hour, the shift.
So the shift is going to go from the weekday lunch period to the later hours because we're getting a number of residents and restaurants coming in, which is going to increase the, during the evening hours as we have more people coming in to dine at dinnertime.
And to stay the night.
Or as you're a resident, yes, you're, you're living here, so.
So the 35 is more or less?
It's a bigger shortage. Okay. So the, these are shortages for the future. And this is once all four of those projects are completed and occupied.
And did you, and I think this works out better if you don't mind if we ask you questions as we go along.
Please.
Because if not, it gets confusing to go back.
Yes.
Within that 35 space shortage, do you know if that is, how many of those are anticipated to be residents staying overnight? And how many of those are, you know, two or three hours visiting a, a business, a restaurant? Because that's a big difference. They're staying, they're parking and they're staying or they're coming and going.
We do have that breakdown in the report. To simplify it, we kept it by each of the development projects. So there is a portion of the residents that are going to be overnight guests and staying, or not guests, but residents who are parked overnight.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
What, what was your calculation on the residential? How did you come up with that number? Obviously, you know, that's, I think that project that we're talking about with the biggest impact is, I think, 1.2 spots per unit that has two and three bedrooms. So just curious, what, how do you do your math on?
It would have been a slightly higher ratio. I'd have to go back to get you those exact ratios if you would like them.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Mayor, if you have a second.
Yes, sir. One second. Go ahead.
No, I just want to add too that Vicky did use her own calculations on, it wasn't to do its own, you know, given her familiarity of the town, what, both in terms of number of parking spaces per residential unit, restaurant use and regular retail. So the, you know, they're probably higher than, than maybe you've seen, but I'll.
Use the mic.
The, the, make sure to use the mic when you're speaking, because if not, it won't record for the, those listening on virtually.
Sure, no, I just mentioned that we, Vicky calculated using her own information on the different types of ratio by land use. And, and one just note I wanted to make, and Vicky and I talked about this, is while the, you know, you've got to remember that that shortage is compared against all of your supply in the total focus area. So while 35 or spaces may not seem like a lot, it will be more intense right around the circle area as well.
One second, and then Councilman Fahad, I'll let you speak. Give me one second just while we're on it. Could you go back to the slide where you show the study perimeter?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we are taking into account on the east side of the circle and those businesses there. All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
And if you can go back one more to the parking so that you can see the public parking one more. No, go forward. There, right there. So that's all of the public parking that was recorded as part of the study.
But study is that whole lighter area.
Right, but this is, and this is the numbers. The numbers all come from spaces, so.
Thank you. Councilman Fahad, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I apologize that I'm on remotely. So I had, I, I wanted to bring up two things that I think we need clarity on because I think that they they're important factors when talking about the projections that the TNA is doing. So I'll, I'll, I'll put them both forward. When, when you guys, your parking demand model, right, you guys are pros. You're, you're making projections. I know that as part of, of how you guys calculate what, what is needed, what is adequate. There's, there's a mass transit component of it that's calculated in there, right? You get like the raw numbers of the, of the, the number of spaces needed. And then I know that in the past and other parking studies that I've read, based on what you know about mass transit that's in the area, it's, it's something that's a variable that you put into the formula to do your calculations. The reason that I bring that up, the, our city had a bus service, county bus service. Obviously, we still have county bus service along 36th Street. But we used to have county bus service that used to go onto Westwood Drive and there was a bus stop in front of the post office. And my understanding, this is something that I was not aware of until very recently, the county pulled that back. I guess there wasn't enough ridership or whatever the case was. My first point is, are you guys aware of that? And was that, does that bring in, into any question or does that adjust whatever you guys calculated? Because that's something that happened very recently. I'm a member of the city council and I didn't realize that until less than 30 days ago, that there's no longer a bus stop in front of the post office and we no longer have that, that avenue of mass transit. And then the other thing, and I asked them both because again, I apologize that I'm on remotely. On page 16, I believe it is, of your report, sorry, page 17, you guys came up with something that I personally have been confused about. When I first got on the council, what was said to me by members of staff that are no longer with us was that the town center project at one Curtis Parkway had a parking garage and that that parking garage was going to have, like the ground floor of it was going to be available for retail and for people that are patrons of the shops that are going to be on the first floor. And that the upper levels were going to be dedicated to residents. And as a matter of fact, in your report on page 17, you guys even write, we understand that the upper levels of the garage built as part of the project will be reserved for residents and the ground floor will be available to retail and restaurant. Why do I bring that up? It is now since, that, that was, was told to me by staff members that are no longer with us that that was going to be the case. But now my understanding is that that is not going to be the case, that basically the parking garage for that big development project, which obviously that big development project is a big variable in terms of this conversation we're having and, and in terms of projected need or adequacy of parking. Because as you guys know, if, if patrons or people that are employees of the retail spaces that are on the fourth floor are using that parking garage for convenience, that means that who utilize parking in much different ways and longer spans, more than two hours, sometimes overnight, from the beginning to the end, that means that they're going to try to take the most convenient spots that are outside of that garage. It could be abutting the, the retail restaurants and that, that's the prime real estate in terms of parking. You guys want to, like, hey, well, so you see, apparently they're still confusing because you guys just did this. And even you guys apparently were, were under the impression that that garage was going to have some dedicated spots for residential and some spots that were open to the public. And, and again, that's my understanding since then is that that's not the case. So those two things, the mass transit calculation to a lesser extent, and then the confusion around what, what, how that garage is being utilized. I, I feel like that could be something that warrants adjustment to how we think of these numbers. Because I know you guys did a great job, but these are all kind of variables that I think make a difference.
To address those two, the first is the transit. Yes, we were made aware of it and I took a look at the models. And because of the type of users and the service ability at the time when we were here, we didn't hardly even account for much utilization based on who's going to be coming here and the residents. So there is no impact from the loss of that transit service as far as the town center now allocating those ground level spaces towards. Are you, are you saying?
All spaces. It, it's my understanding, and again, staff could chime in, right? When I first got on council, I was told what you guys were the impression of, right? Top floors are going to be dedicated only to residential and that bottom floor was going to be of the garage was going to be for general public employees and the restaurants, patrons, whatever. It is my understanding, I didn't know how they were going to do that, whether with permits or whether without gate. But it's my understanding that though, all those spaces in that garage are just free for all and wide open. And that being the case, I feel like that is, that's something that, that, I'm not, I don't want to say brings into question your findings. I'm sure you guys did a great job, but, but, you know, residents that are living there that, that may not find a, a space that have to park outside is going to throw off these numbers.
Do we want? Let's, let's get clarification on that. J.C., Tammy, do you know with what? Because I'm confused with that now too. My understanding is when the project was approved, the first ground floor is open for the businesses and retail and then the top floors are residential. Has something changed?
No, right now, Tammy, Tammy, you want to say, go ahead, Tammy.
Well, well, when the project was first proposed, they were.
Well, well, when the project was first proposed, they were anticipating on putting a gate, a a garage gate. On the second floor going second, third and fourth floors. That is no longer the case. They they eliminated that gate. So all three, four floors are going to be open with the intent that the third, the second, third and fourth floor is going to be for residents. And the bottom ground floor is going to be open to. To the retail, to the residents, to the patrons of the businesses, to whomever.
But in essence, uh, somebody can park on the second or third floor if they're looking. Okay, so that.
To to Councilman Fahad's point, um, I did hear something similar to what he heard. So I'm just gonna, I'll have to verify and 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 get back to you. I don't want to speak in rumors or anything, but I just want to confirm. Um, that indeed the the first floor is still available. Nothing that we've heard officially has changed anything. Um, nothing has changed.
Through the chair.
But I heard the same thing that that Councilman Fahad heard, and so I just have to confirm.
Okay. Through the chair, just further clarification on that. It because what I want to know is, if I'm going to rent an apartment there and I'm. Might have a parking spot or not. In other words, anyone can park on any one of those floors. Are those, the apartments floors are not going to be designated. I know the gate, we we got rid of that. So just a another thing to be clarified, because that's.
Okay.
Could have an impact on rent.
Okay, yeah, we'll we'll clarify that, but that's, well, let's um see if we get back to the study because now we're, I don't want to reanalyze.
Councilman Fahad brought up a point and we're all kind of confused on what the status of that, if something's changed.
I'll get, yeah, I'll get clarification on that.
Declaration letter will have it all spelled out.
Okay, all right, please continue.
So going back, if we do need to make changes to those assumptions, we can, we can do that. We'll just need to know what those are specifically.
Yeah, definitely.
And I just, if you could go back, if, I'm sorry, if you could go back, I just want to point out that of these four properties that you looked at. Um, the Adventist property and the Hook Square property are pretty full. They're.
Yes.
Have businesses in there and everything. The other two are totally empty. And so we're kind of like, half the study is is what you see now is probably pretty likely what we're going to see. Moving forward for a few years, but the other half. We don't have the residents there in the building and the town center and it's still empty. I mean, it's still not under operation, so there's nothing. And the Berry's cleaners, there's nothing really except you're as professionals giving us the the um representation of what you expect.
Right.
Where where tenants were known, they were given that information, so.
So we can model them.
So they could model them.
Okay, thank you, Tammy.
Looking at the estimated future parking needs, um, will there be enough parking to meet demand in the future? Um, so again, after all of these four development projects are completed with full occupancy. We expect a future parking shortage of twenty-six spaces during the weekday and bintay period, which is now your peak hour. A slightly larger sho- uh shortage of thirty-five spaces during your weekday dinner period. And a parking shortage during your weekend dinner period as well. Now, one of the big things here is we look at these four projects and you can see in the bottom right corner, they are all right next to each other. So as demand increases for these four projects. Again, it's going to be focused in this area, which is already heavily utilized around the circle. Um, we know that peak hour is going to shift from the weekday daytime to the later evening hours. And it's going to be concentrated, like I just mentioned, in that corner of the city. Uh, we're expecting increased traffic congestion likely as well. Um, which then goes back into a lot of the pedestrian safety things that we also included our recommendations later. We did have the public workshop and I know Mayor Mitchell was in attendance. The concerns were the impact from the city center, the impact from overnight on-street parking. Concern about residents finding on-street parking, employees taking prime on-street spaces. And then there's a desire for use of private lots when businesses are closed. In our online survey, again, forty-four hundred and ninety-five responses. So great job, city, on promoting that and getting so much input. That was really good. Um, for most of the respondents, their parking experience is considered good. So most people are able to find a space to park and they're only five minutes from their destination, so. That's pretty good considering it's not level service A, but I would say it's very good for most cities. The other thing, our common concerns in the survey, insufficient parking around the circle on Westward Drive. Illegal parking is commonly observed. There's not a love enough signage and information on where to park. And the off-street parking areas are not easy to access. The other things were parking regulations are not followed or enforced, and there wasn't enough ADA parking spaces.
I'm a bit disappointed that we didn't get more response. When you say ninety percent residents, you mean that out of the four ninety-five. Ninety percent of the respondents were residents.
Correct.
So I'm a bit disappointed that we didn't get more input from the business owners. Who are the ones that, you know, sometimes say um they have trouble uh finding. But, you know, they had the opportunity to respond.
This is a lot, and I'm going to go through it quickly because it's really going to be summarized additionally later. So the biggest recommendations actively man, start actively manage your parking resources. Because they are limited and they're expected to be even more limited as growth occurs. Assign a single point of contact for parking, which is going to be critical as you start to move forward. Budget two, full-time parking enforcement officers. Invest in LPR equipment, which is license plate um reader equipment that can be mounted to a vehicle. This allows for really efficient parking enforcement. You do almost a thing like digital chalking. So as you drive by, you record a license plate and the space that they're parked. As you go by the next time, you can see if they've exceeded their time limit. If so, you can issue them a warning or a citation. I always advocate starting with warnings in the beginning of these programs. Allow people to understand the rules, educate them on where they should park for additional time, and then go from there. Looking at all of the posted.
Equipment that's provided on a regular vehicle?
You can put it on a regular vehicle, you could put it on.
If they.
Yeah. Look at reviewing all of the posted restrictions and update them as needed. Because there are some streets where there's two-hour parking on one side of the road, but nothing on the other. So look at making some of these con things consistent, enforcing them. Consider a parking management plan that's going to be using a phased approach. Now, a lot of these things that are recommendations aren't something that you're going to go out and do all of these at once. I always, you know, equate it as you're going to, you know, do one thing, measure it, because behavior is going to change. So as you start enforcing time limits, people are going to move. So if you have employees parking on street and you start enforcing a two-hour time limit. Those people are going to go somewhere else, and then you want to measure. So when you do that one step, do you now have plenty of on-street parking spaces in certain areas? Do you have a surplus? And so then you can look at adjusting your time limits accordingly. Or creating employee parking areas if nobody else wants to use those. So really just taking a phased approach. You do one action, you measure it, you assess it, and then you go to the next step. Because the purpose of management is to distribute your demand throughout your study area.
I ask you a question regarding um the FTD positions. In your experience, is that necessary to have them every single day? Or is it effective, just as effective or as much, you know, having, say, randomly three days a week? And so that you're never, from a cost savings, because obviously it's it's expensive to to have the staff to do that. And I'm wondering if um if it's consistent, but not every Monday, Wednesday and Friday. But just, you know, us uh random, I I don't know how else to.
Yeah, if if there due to budgetary reasons, you can do that. You need to make sure that it's not known. Because there's municipalities that that I've been to and they're like, there's Bob, he comes down here every day at eleven.
Right, it would have to be a, and and actually, probably what would be happening is because we're covering. I know it's not a large space, but it's relatively large space. Um, you know, that they concentrate, so it's not maybe every hour that they're passing by. But it's, uh, and I'm just looking, trying to get an idea so the council, so we can think about these things when we're talking about. Um, these decisions, which, you know, are investments that we clearly need to to consider making.
Yeah, and when you do get, if you have that equipment and enough person, you're going to want them to constantly be circling. Because if you only do it certain times, that car that pulls in right after they pass, you're going to miss them. So it's just, you're changing behavior. You're not trying to issue citations. You're trying to get people to turn over those on-street spaces and not be there longer than two hours.
And one other question, um, in your experience for municipalities that do this, because then you're issuing a citation, right? So there's a fee. Are generally those um enterprise funds, are they self-generating the cost of the FTD? How does that work with most municipalities?
Every municipality is a little different depending on how you're structured. I believe you're under as a department under the city. So if you go to the city of Miami, they have a parking authority. We have other locations and municipalities that they're a utility. And so they're underfunded like that, and then you do have enterprise funds that are also established to collect these revenues.
Said, I know in Dade County, I was just talking to someone today, Dade County.
If you could talk into the microphone, we want to make sure the people.
Sorry about that.
At home here is.
I believed, and I don't, I'm not, I don't know all the details, we can certainly find it out, but I believe Dade County, a lot of parking tickets. You know, they help adjudicate, so they get a piece of your parking ticket. Uh, we see that in other areas as well, so it's not like you're getting all the citation revenue. Just to, I don't know what that, what that split is, but we could find it.
Okay, thank you. Other things as we're we're looking and promoting actively managing your parking is. Looking at establishing a parking advisory committee and, you know, engaging in formal community outreach. I always say that it's always better to inform and educate everybody on these things than why you're doing them. And sometimes when people understand why you're all of a sudden enforcing these time limits is to, you know, promote turnover. Sometimes they they accept these these changes a little bit more when they just are are aware of the the decision and the reasons behind it. And then again, like I mentioned, this is going to be an ongoing process for some time as you regularly monitor and evaluate the parking conditions. And then adjust your parking plan accordingly. Um, some of these tools are adjusting the time restrictions. So if you want additional turnover, reduce those time limits. If you're not seeing a lot of utilization, you can maybe extend them. The same thing is, the other parking management tool is PayPark, and that is very effective at distributing demand. And every time you go to the airport, you see that. You know, all the parking is not priced the same. The closer you are to the terminal, the more you pay. And that leads to people making decisions about how far they're willing to walk based on price, so that is a tool. Not saying that you're there yet, but as you go down the road, it may come to a point where you need to distribute demand and time restrictions aren't enough. And you want to do that. The other thing is looking at establishing some sort of parking fund. And utilize your PILOP fees to offset the costs. So ideally, everything that is generated, either through citations or if you go to paid eventually. Parking revenues goes back to support your parking infrastructure for the city. So the other section here is infrastructure. You need more parking. As these developments come to fruition and people come to downtown in the circle. You're not going to have enough parking spaces.
Through the chair. I have one question, Mayor. So if um if what was stated just now is factual, that the whole parking garage is now open for. Irrespective of if it's resident, business, retail, whatever, how does that impact us now? We need more parking.
Even if it's not, I think you're going to need more once these are all completed. So based on the shortages that were projected earlier.
And and. Could you put thirty-five plus minus? So that's more or less.
And to answer your question specifically, um, remember that when the project. That we were talking about went forward to get approval. Um, it required in the parking study. And it specifically says that in in order for this project to go through, it had to do a shared parking. In order to meet their demand for their parking spaces at the hundred and twenty-one spaces, and that's in the study, so. And it specifically says that it's a shared parking analysis. And that the proposer is to be uh to have a mixed-use development.
Correct.
On their parking, so.
The second and third, and I think fourth floor was platonically just for residents, but now it's open. So when that was submitted, that was submitted with a closed parking area, not now that it's open, correct?
Well, now it, yeah, now it's open.
It's irrelevant.
Yeah, but regardless, it was shared parking.
I get it, but now we have more shared parking because now it's open. So I think there's a little, there's going to be a little.
Any clarity that goes contrary to approved staff letters, council meetings, so. Will give you some clarity because technically the way we've seen it before, it was not.
I have.
It's just residents, but.
Yeah, and that's how the model shows.
Right.
Even though there's no gates, we're showing it as.
This is a great report, by the way.
Thank you. And and I think we're even just, we've just gotten started, but I think we're making a lot of progress. Because this back and forth on specific issues, um, we're all on the same page. And um, and I know our minds are all um working, thinking about this. Um, one of the things with the parking spaces that you counted, um, Tammy, I know. Um, we had the county uh allow us to put in the pavers, the permeable pavers on.
Yes.
Curtis Parkway near Papa John's, and we've requested them allowing us that first block, only the first block, to continue that. And also put it on the other side of right now. Uh, so we have, I don't know, how many spaces would you say, ten? Right now, and this would probably give us an extra thirty? I'm guessing if we continue.
Yes.
And this thirty, maybe even forty, I'm not sure, I'm just eyeballing it. So those parking spaces, because right now parking on the median, um, what do you call? Parallel parking on the median is allowed um on Curtis Parkway. Those paver, do you recall whether those paver, permeable paver spaces on Curtis Parkway, the first block? Um, on the west side of of Curtis Parkway, well. The west, uh, southbound, because it's actually on the east side of that one.
Yes.
Um, were those counted in the study?
Yes.
But you didn't count the additional ones that.
Correct.
We expect to get.
Correct, or the ones on the northbound towards.
Toward northbound, okay, and that in itself.
Canal Street that we're going to gain as a result of the metro bus, um, no long, or I'm sorry, our shuttle bus no longer parking there. That we're going to remove our shuttle bus from Canal Street, put it on where the metro bus stop is. And so we're going to gain that many more spaces on Canal Street as well.
So in actuality, we may have, and these are spaces on the first block of Curtis, which are very close to that area or walkable, certainly walkable. Um, I know resident had concerns about walking, you know, crossing the circle and everything. But um, just, I think we need to keep that in mind. What's the status of that? Have we had it approved by the county to?
So it.
I mean, it looks like it's coming, right?
Well, it's it's not going to be done through the county, no. We're going to end up having to do it out of city dollars.
Through the chair, why, why are we moving um an option for mass transit?
The metro bus service, the Better Bus Network is no longer coming through our city.
Through the chair.
And why is it?
Just clarification on that.
Go ahead.
The county did a s- a full study on transportation services, and as a result, about a month ago.
November, November.
They make decisions, and one of the decision was to eliminate Miami Springs.
There wasn't much use, just be a little frank about the reality of it.
Let's, let's be clear, there was, I think, JC, because I asked JC to follow up with the county. You can't just like leave us high and dry.
Yeah, didn't say anything.
And so, and I know, and it, and I think it was sixty people riding it.
Yeah, something like sixty.
That's not insignificant in a community our size. But I, well, at another meeting, JC can update, he's been working with um the county uh. DTPW. There's some work in progress.
They're, they're, they've expressed, you know, willingness to help and maybe restore some level of service to the city. So I think we have something worked out, but before, I I don't want to say anything until.
Right, until.
Well, no, but we'll know. Is is a is a number that you would have to count. We will number, and I would, I would track on what I just said and say that sixty is a number that you would have to count. If that's the number that is true, I don't, I never, but I've never seen it, doesn't mean that, you know.
And is that wardings or are they coming here or are they leaving? So that's, you know, understanding ridership and, you know, are they embarking here or are they getting off here and going back home?
Through the chair.
Right.
Yes, sir. Councilman?
Uh, yeah, I I wanted to bring something kind of getting getting back uh specifically to the parking stuff. In the uh, so time restrictions, uh, right, it 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 seems that throughout. In the, uh, so time restrictions, uh, right, it, it, it seems that throughout this report. We're talking about that time restrictions are necessary, uh, because, you know, there are certain. Parking spaces that are most convenient, uh, that are right in front of retail and restaurant, uh, uh, spaces. Um, and in the, in the report, it said that one of the, one of the things that, that, uh. That, uh, uh, TNA found is that we kind of had inconsistent. Uh, time restrictions and enforcement of it. I think in particular, they gave, they gave the example that. One side of Westward had like a two-hour restriction and the other side didn't, and that they didn't see any enforcement of those. And that kind of got me wondering what I, you know, I may have missed it, but what, what are the areas where we have time restrictions? Because I think that that, I, I think that everybody would agree that. Uh, you know, just in front of, uh, Burrito Ville and the, you know, and, and that Ray's Taekwondo and there are, there are areas. If, if we've got one side of Westward has it and the other doesn't. I think we all would agree that there are certain areas within the CBD. Where we probably, you know, where we're going to have these restaurants, we're probably going to want, uh, time restrictions. But I was even unclear what areas do currently have. Could, could you guys elaborate on that?
We did collect all of this data. I didn't include it in the map, but I can provide it. As far as which areas are time restriction are, are applicable and which ones aren't.
Maybe staff can just provide us with that, uh, because, you know, that, and again, I guess I never noticed, but. But I think that that's, that's a good first step, right, is, is determining where we have time restrictions. And, and where we may need to, to increase that or, or, or look at where it is and where it should be.
I'll get you that information, Tammy, of all the streets.
Was it in this report?
I don't know if all of the details on the hourly were in the appendices. That's where it would be.
Okay.
When you have.
The east side of Canal Street. You guys were in the process that was still under construction or some of it, right? When you guys did your survey?
Correct.
So you wouldn't know there if they'd been put up the signs. Have the signs been put up on the east side of Canal Street?
On the east side of Canal Street? Uh, no, because they're still doing some, uh, work over there, uh, as far as, uh, right with Public Works. On the right of way, correct.
Okay.
So, but when that is completed, we will put up the two-hour parking, which would be consistent with the entire.
Sorry, Canal Street. Okay, thank you.
And then the other, um, areas that we know for sure that have the parking restrictions is Westward Drive.
Some of the side streets are as well.
Curtis, does, does Curtis have some?
No, not that I saw.
Just westward.
And the other thing to keep in mind when we say the areas that we do have two-hour parking, what we say is. I believe it's two hours part, two hour parking from eight AM to six PM.
Correct.
So that leaves that whole. No clarity as to what that means after six PM. Does that mean you can park there all night or you can't park there at all?
Yeah.
So I think that's something that we need to address also. The sign should be very clear as to for a twenty-four hour period, even if it. And particularly, you know, I know like in Miami Beach and all this, it, you know, depends on whether it's Saturday, Sunday or Monday, but. We should be covering the twenty-four hour period, giving very clear information.
Yes.
Overnight parking, I guess. Restrictions.
A lot of times those types of overnight parking are how long you will allow somebody to park in a space or adopted to your ordinances. To state, you know, we allow part vehicles to be parked on public streets for up to X number of hours without moving. And then that equipment that we were talking about, the LPR, that'll help you monitor it as well. And so that way you can know if it's a street that's not time restricted, if they've been just parked there for a prolonged period of time.
I can just add a quick comment too, you know, just to your point that, you know, as, and as Vicky's report shows that as. These development projects advance, there's going to be more demand in the evening. So you may want to extend. Time restriction beyond six PM, you know, so whatever, because again, you want people to come to restaurants to be able to find a space. Not being locked up by others who know that there's no restrictions after six o'clock.
Yes. That's, that's going to probably be even more important as you go forward because that employee that comes in at five forty-five. Knows that they can park there all night because they're not going to be there more than two hours or even five o'clock. Because they're not going to exceed that time limit before six PM. And so they can park in front on these highly desirable on-street parking areas. So. That would be something that we would recommend as well as part of this parking plan is looking at the hours. And, you know, how late do you want to go on them so that you can make sure that. All of these evening users are able to find a convenient parking space as close as possible to their destination to get in and out because we want that turnover. Um, other things on the infrastructure that we were looking at is delineating the individual parking spaces instead of having a large parking zone. And the purpose of this is to make sure people are parking closer to each other and then maybe getting real spaced out. And instead of fitting four cars, you can only fit three because of the way they're parking. So striping them out to direct them and get them a little tighter in some of these areas. And then the biggest thing that we really liked is, you know, expanding Curtis Parkway as much as you can, further down even. That roadway offers a great line of sight. I can see the gazebo, which is great. I know that's the circle. And that's huge when you're parking for wayfinding. Because when I get out of my car, if I can see where I'm heading, I don't feel like it's as far as if I can't see it. If I'm. Parked behind one of these, you know, retail strips, I don't know where I'm going. I don't even know where I am. Some people are. Completely lost when they make a turn. And so they could be back there and not know if they need to go left or right. Or where westward is even. So a lot of times line of sight is great. Curtis is great for that. You know, not only maybe looking to do the parallel down at an additional block. But we even think there may be an opportunity, I don't know if you want to, but look at doing angled parking on Curtis. To increase that supply even more, because those spaces are so proximate to the circle and everything that's going on over there. That that's a really good asset to have and to be able to, you know, explore expanding that supply. Because.
Believe we've looked at that and Tammy will probably know, but that's a county road and they will not allow us to do angle parking on that road. Do you remember that, Tammy? I kind of, that's.
And it's a beautiful area. I wouldn't even consider parking there.
Through, through the chair.
Non-negotiable.
Well, I don't think we're going to go further, but.
Yeah, correct.
But we're at that already, already has some.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
So, um, I, I, I get what you're saying and, and it really would increase with traffic into the city. Which means then put traffic management at the circle. Because you've got a medium on Curtis Parkway where people park, they walk down the medium when they get to the circle. Where do we go? So just part of, as part of that redesigning of that area.
Yes. Uh, the other thing that we were looking at is also relocating the police and fire vehicles from this lot right next to City Hall. And may basically turning that into the Bain Downtown Visitor Parking Lot. Because it's a large area, it'd be really easy to direct a lot of people that are first-time visitors to come there and park there. And, uh, you know, assemble a lot of people in one spot.
I know there's logistics. Address that because I think these kind of things, it's better to address them as we go. And again, I'm going to defer to JC and Tammy. My understanding is that police lot was purchased with police funds for that purpose, right?
Fun.
Yes. So that is their lot.
They, they knew that, but they were just making a recommendation.
Okay, but I just want, you know, because we can talk about these things and then I want to make sure we understand the, the context of that. Okay.
Yes, we were just looking at it from a high-level master plan for the city as parking resources.
And moving and having the police department relocate their lot to something else.
Or relocate their vehicles yet, because a lot of those are just being used for storage. And so our thing is, instead of having this huge parking asset right here that is on westward, that's easy to get to. And has a lot of capacity, instead of having it used for so much storage to offset that storage maybe somewhere else. And because they're police vehicles, it might be easier to get an agreement to store them somewhere else. And open those spaces up for people that are coming downtown to spend money. And so that'll be good for a place for like, I'm coming downtown, I'm going to be here longer than two hours, so I can't park on the street, where do I go? Well, here's the downtown visitor customer lot. This is where you can park. Stay all you want. So that's sort of the goal of this. Then looking at other win-win arrangements between the city and private owners.
Excuse me, Councilman Fahad, did you want to ask something?
Yes, if you don't mind, thank you. Um, I wanted, and, and sorry to, to interrupt, but I might, I might as well. Um, throw it in here. I think that when I was thinking about kind of the outcomes of, of this workshop, I, I think that. Uh, we're projecting what's going to be coming and that whether, whether or not there's agreement of whether there's ample enough parking now or not. I think everybody agrees especially particularly after this study, uh, that, that we are going to need more spaces. Uh, but I think it's important for us to just kind of note as a council that future development. We probably should kind of all be in agreement that any future development, like ground-up development should have enough parking. I think that we, you know, uh, when, when the theater property was, was vacant for forty years, I understand that, you know, we wanted to give an inducement. To kind of get that ball rolling. But given what we know now, particularly after this study, I think that, that it's important that we kind of. Are all on the same page that any future development, we, we got to ensure. Because, you know, we, we were hoping that this gets the ball rolling in terms of development, but I, I really think that going forward, we need to make sure that. Anybody who's coming in, uh, designs, projects that have enough parking to be able to accommodate, uh, what they're bringing in. And I think that that also includes kind of the multifamily. I think, I think, uh, if I'm, if I'm predicting, I think that's one of the things that, uh, the vice mayor Bravo was going to bring up. When, when we did that, that variance, uh, on the, the property on Park Street and Hibiscus, uh, right there. Down the street from the women's club, uh, there's, there's properties like that that are getting converted to multifamily property, uh, uh, properties. And then there's the, the parking requirements and standards are, are, are the uniform for everybody. Regardless of whether it's single family or not, I think it's like one and a half spaces for every unit. And I think that as we, we look at all of this, I think that we, we need to be looking ahead. Uh, at, at, at what projects are coming, uh, because that was an example. If you guys remember that. The, the architect was willing to do more, more parking. Uh, I think it was four units or six units that they were adding, but because it wasn't required, they weren't doing it. Uh, and all of that is within this, you know, five-minute walk of the central business district. I think that, that, uh. I'm thankful that we're talking about this because I think that we need to, to think ahead of future development and make sure that. We have ample parking so that, you know, whatever, whatever, uh, 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 whatever shore, shortage we have of parking. Doesn't get any worse with, uh, any future development.
Hey, thank you.
Um, the last, uh, tool that we often see and is used for infrastructure increases is, uh, master lease agreements. So we're talking about these, these are going to be mutually beneficial agreements with private owners. So it may just be somebody that's not using their parking during the evening. And maybe we need more residential parking and they're willing to share some of their resources during specific days and hours. And again, this has to be on a case-by-case basis. Every landowner has different land uses and different requirements. And it's not to say that you can't structure something around them. I mean, I see this all the time. I'm working on a project in Clearwater with a church and they've notched out spaces for all their holy days and even their Sunday concert series. But it's allowing them and the city to share parking. So a lot of this is looking each one of them independently. And seeing how you can make something work that's mutually beneficial to increase your parking supply. Especially during the times when you're going to need additional spaces.
We said too, um, and it's very important to know that the success of what Vicky's talking about really depends on the, uh, proactivity of the town. You know, people want to know if they lease their property, uh, you know, because you have it kind of happening in certain places and just creating conflicts. Be it the bank property or the land market, but if the city is actively involved versus building new parking, which is very expensive. And you say, look, we'll, we'll facilitate, we'll ensure, we'll enforce. So if somebody has a problem, that's, so I just wanted to add that, that it's really important this, these lease agreements and these type of shared arrangements. Require your involvement and it's, you know, they're not just kind of organic to work well.
Next slide, please. Looking at safety and I call these linkages, the connections between parking and destinations. Um, really looking at some enhanced pedestrian safety measures. Because as was mentioned earlier, the crosswalks are not, they don't leave you feeling very comfortable. You, you always want to look at that driver's eye to make sure before you cross that street that they're seeing you. They're not on their phone texting their girlfriend or their mom and not paying attention as you go across that roadway. So definitely looking at that, looking at increasing the lighting and aesthetically enhancing the walkways. You know, make it more walkable, make people okay with walking to and from. Um, I did put this and I'm going to jump ahead to those photos below. So when I was here the first time, this was one of my experiences. So you can see as I was pulling down, I believe that was Morningside Drive, that little green dot. Is, was a sign that I saw right there for the Miami Springs Public Parking. So that sign I saw that said, public parking goes in. Now, as soon as I turned in, this was my view down this alleyway. Now, this is very atypical for me to see public parking located behind stores like this. In most municipalities, that area is used for loading, unloading deliveries and employees only. So it was when they said that's a public lot, I was quite surprised. So as you're going down this road, you see all these cars, okay, where do I park? If you look to your left, this side says towaway, you know, employee parking only. When you look to the right, you have the residential, again, another towaway. So unless you were, you knew this area, you wouldn't know that you could park in these few spaces here, that these are public spaces. Because there, while there is some signage, it's not easily and highly visible, so it's not intuitive. So that was one of the things that I first noted is that, you know, while you know there's public parking there. And employees and residents may know it's public parking, me as a first-time visitor, I didn't know, I just saw a lot of towaway signs. So really looking at, at some things like that, branding your parking areas, even if it's maybe some additional signage or. Corraling those spaces in paint that says, these are public parking, you're, you're good here, some things like that. Um, and then also looking at a formal policy on loading and unloading. Because in some of your lots, like the one right behind Starbucks, they use that alleyway, the exit to load. And when that's taking place, you can't exit, you have to go back out the other way. So.
Yes. But just to piggyback on what you're saying, uh, on two things, that parking lot, like you said, towards the middle of that parking lot. There's a bunch of parking spaces that actually belong to a residential building.
Yes.
And then behind Starbucks, it does say public parking, but I can tell you, because I have pictures, because I, I, this is what I'm trying to fix myself. You have tenants in multifamilies there that are using up the majority of the parking all day. So I've gone morning, mid and evening. And you see cars there that just don't move.
Mm-hmm.
So I get it. They don't want to lose their parking spot because once they get out, it's, it's, it's a, it's a.
Oh, but also in those, and that's just, you know, one of the challenges that we have in a city like ours that's going to be a hundred years old and, you know, things were built throughout.
Different.
Um, those areas, um, where are they supposed to park? You know, that they've always parked. So it's different right now when we have a new development. That we can look at the whole picture and say, this is what the plan is to, we need to consider and actually, you know. With this whole parking and there may be more, but there's three, to me, three very important considerations here. One is. The, the employees, City Hall employees and other employees in the commercial area that are going to work and are going to be there. Six, eight, ten hours a day.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the business owners, the, and their employees, the, um, uh. Visitors that are coming, you know, to frequent those businesses or to come to City Hall or to any of those businesses. And then those areas where we have residences, um, along Canal Street is one. Um, along Curtis Parkway, you know, the.
Yes.
Both sides and that's their parking. So there's three and we have to, like you said, figure out how to, um, I believe how to identify. What's allowed, what isn't, this is where you park right now. I, I know, we all know of, of business owners who park all day in front. Taking up a two, you know, it says two hours and they park there all day and they complain there's no parking, but they're taking up what says two hours. Um, you know, allowable parking during the day. So, um, and there may be more situations, but those to me are three very clear. Situations that we have to address that are, um, uh, pretty, you know, different. Yes, sir.
Through the chair, I think also existing buildings that we have, it don't have.
To the chair, I think also existing buildings that we have, that don't have a certain use, but, you know, will allow some other use that's allowed in that district could change everything. Uh, just curious, because obviously the loading and unloading. Do you find, uh, specific times restrictions for those type of, uh, deliveries and stuff? I know it's probably difficult to, for logistics, logistics to try to do it, but I could see already from the town center, even though they have a back alley, to all those restaurants that are going there. Uh, ones that are coming in the future. I mean, where, if these guys take five of the parking spots to go make a delivery, and sometimes they're there for a while.
Absolutely, and I think this.
So is there restriction of times, do you see this in other municipalities where they put, like, if you're gonna come here, you gotta come after midnight, I mean, I know easier, easier said than done, but.
Right.
Is there time period restrictions?
There are municipalities who restrict, restrict, uh, loading and unloading and drop off during specific days and times.
Okay.
Because we know when they come in, a lot of times they are taking up on-street parking.
Big truck.
Or blocking off large alleys that people need to, to circulate through. So yes, easier said than done.
But, but they are timetables, I mean, times that they restrict it.
Yes.
We restricted it for the town center.
For certain time?
The loading and delivery shall not occur between the hours of six AM to nine AM and four PM to seven PM, Monday through Friday. And it's in their, the site plan approval.
Six AM, can you repeat that again, Tammy?
It's between the hours of six AM to nine AM and four PM to seven PM, Monday through Friday.
Just, just very quickly add, um, you know, a lot of towns do have designated loading zones as well. But, you know, they take up parking, um, but, you know, there is, given all the rise in FedEx and Uber, you know, loading is an issue. And one of the things though that's critical is enforcement. You know, you gotta start, you'll see the stupidest type of loading, unloading. Those people gotta know there's a consequence to doing that. Will you catch them all the time? Maybe not, but it, it does start, you know, and obviously your police see that, hopefully they're doing it. And again, if you add some enforcement capability, hopefully they'll, not that it'll control it, but cause, uh, it's gonna be, continue to be a challenge, you know, everywhere.
Thank you, please continue.
Okay. Um, I know we, we talked a little bit about signage, really getting a uniform theme so that I know I'm going into a Miami Springs public parking area and I'm okay to park here. I think that's gonna be critical as you continue to grow and you need to utilize all of these, um, alley. I'm gonna call them back of house type parking areas. Cause we want to make sure that when people are parking back there, that if it is a true visitor who's never been here before, that they're comfortable and know that I can park here. And, and going back, looking at those linkages, where do I go when I'm here? Maybe, you know, mounting some signage to say Westward Avenue this way. Just so that when I get out of my car and I'm turned around, because I am not, you know, spatially oriented at all. I know I walked this way, I can get to Westward Drive. And once I'm on Westward, I can get anywhere, cause I know now where I am, cause I can see things. So things like that, you know, that pedestrian wayfinding and helping them get in and out. Um, and then looking at consistent messages throughout everywhere. Next. So here's the big summary, you know, which ones should be considered? These two are the, probably the biggest ones. Really look at parking management plan to actively manage your resources. Getting that single point of contact so that you can funnel all of the decisions through one person versus two or three. So that this plan that, that gets developed can be thoughtful, can address all the various user groups. The employee user groups, where are they, where do you want them to park? Where do you want your visitors and customers to park? And where do you want residents who are currently using your, your infrastructure, where do you want them to park? And developing that plan and then implementing time limits to encourage that plan. So where you want your visitors, you want to have these lower time limits because that'll encourage turnover and that'll keep out your employees. And then this person is also gonna look at, you know, what are your hours for two hour parking? Is it going to the evening so that way we can capture those restaurant employees as well? And really looking at, you know, the ground up, this phased approach, one step at a time. Let's start enforcing time limits and see what happens. Because you may find that all of a sudden, there's a lot of spaces opened up because you start enforcing a two hour time limit along Westward. But where are they going? And then what do we need to do in those areas?
When you're saying to adjust the time limits, is that something, and that would be in the, the parking management plan, which I love that idea of, you know, I think that's something that we just don't have. It's, it's very erratic and it's just a consequence of, you know, um, uh, historic older city that, uh, this is how it's been in one area and, um, but when you're adjusting those, how, is there a, say, just using this as an example, say if right now we were to say, let's say the two hour parking, we're going to say two, no, um, two hour parking only from seven thirty AM to ten thirty PM to kind of capture, allow for restaurants and all this. Um, and then it doesn't seem to, to be needed or it's not effective or something. How often do you, in general, when, would you adjust those? Is it a yearly basis? Is it a few months? Because I can see that being very confusing to someone who, last time I parked here, it was allowed and now it's changing. So, but also we want that flexibility to be able to, um, especially if we're going to be doing this, to see what we need.
I would say probably six to eight months. You'll be able to start measuring, cause you're gonna wanna, that person's gonna wanna say, let's go out and let's track this and see what, what's happened. Because in the study, we knew how many, how much utilization there was along Westward. What is, where is it now that we're enforcing time limits? Are we seeing more spaces open? Are there no parked cars, you know, in one block? And that indicates that we don't have a lot of visitors or customer demand in that area. And then, but again, going back, parking advisory committee transparency. So a lot of communications, hey, this is what we're doing and why. We're trying to encourage turnover of these valuable spaces that are on street. We're moving employees to these locations. So if you're an employee, we don't want you parking on street, we want you to park in A, B or C. And let them know, because we can't just say you can't park here, we gotta give them an alternative, cause they have to come to work. So what is in this plan, where do you want them to park? And then as you do that, you're measuring it. And then you're gonna report, you know, whoever's in charge is gonna report back to the community and say, look, we did this. It was very effective, we shifted employees off the on-street parking areas and allowed for more turnover of visitors. However, on these three locations or four locations, we're finding that not many visitors are coming and parking here. So maybe we can expand the time limits or even convert them to an employee parking zone and issue employee permits. That allows employees to park in specific walks. And maybe that's a six month time period. And as you grow and need those spaces for somebody else, you can shift them out. But constant communication on why you're doing things and your findings will help go a long way.
Thank you, Nudet. I just wanted to add, yeah, I, I served as a manager of public parking and we had a parking and traffic advisory committee. So suggestions like Vicky's talking about would come to them. And they'd vet it, you'd have police, you'd have parking, you'd have, you know, maybe planning involved. They would kind of make the recommendation to city council if an ordinance needed to be changed, a time limit. So it's not like you have to really vet it here every meeting. So the timing, and I, and I understand your concern, you don't want to change regulations regularly. You want to really vet them and think about them. But there are gonna be periodic times that it does make sense to be flexible and change. And I think with this advisory committee, helping vet these type of situations, you, you at least as council people, mayor have comfort that, you know, we've looked at this pretty thoroughly and it's not just reactionary, you know.
Yes, sir. Did you have a question?
That was a good point.
Thank you. Please continue. So looking at regularly monitoring and measuring, um, cause there will be sometimes unintended consequences. So you may sign something and find now all of a sudden, everybody's parking in the swells in front of Barbara's lawn. And she's mad because now I have people parking in front of my house. Hmm. So sometimes things like that come up and then you're gonna wanna look on, on what these consequences are and if you have management tools that you can help curb those. Um, and then the other thing we talk about is securing additional parking inventory, either through master lease agreements or creating new parking areas. And I would explore as many of those as you possibly can. Cause it's better to have too many parking spaces than not enough.
And I know.
To the chair.
Oh, we explored, a few years ago, we explored, um, our city manager before had reached out to the churches. We have two churches near here that have spots and that didn't quite work out at that time. But that's something we can certainly revisit. Um, the parking lots are empty for the most part during the day. Uh, you know, especially on weekdays, so, and there may be other, um, other institutions, facilities, something like that too, that, um, we'll have to take a look at that, that's a great idea.
And some of these other recommendations, I think you got a question.
Yeah, I think Walter wants to say something.
Yes, if you don't, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Um, with regard to the master lease agreements and maybe, maybe Vicky, you can kind of give your opinion. Um, so for instance, I'm thinking of the Truist Bank, right? Obviously during the day, during their business hours, they're, they have a right to tow people because they have the parking for their, you know, for the, for their bank patrons. Um, but if you were going to approach a church or a business and, and get into one of these, uh, lease agreements, um, how, how do you typically work out the liability, right? Because then, let's say someone like the Truist Bank, you got into an agreement with the city so that that parking then would become available for people that want to eat at Si Amos or something like that. Um, who, who takes on the liability or, 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 or the insurance? Cause then now that's a parking lot, right? And if anything happens there and then I know.
I think our city attorney would work that out, right?
Yes.
Our city attorney would negotiate with them. And it might be different from case to case.
Where do you see, where do you see the burden on that, mostly on the city side of having to take additional?
Yeah, most likely.
Yeah.
Cause we need.
Yeah. I could just quickly add, yeah, I would, I would think. You know, cause we've done this when I was practicing, the, you know, the property owner, you know, one, there's an incentive potentially financially, but just let's take Truist Bank. If you could say those four spots, because I, you know, I've seen this a lot, I don't know if it's a hundred percent occupied. But let's say they said, we'll give you three spots, we're gonna sign them and you sell a permit to the three restaurant employees who work there, whatever. The likelihood is they're gonna want additional liability insurance, cause, you know, they're probably not making enough money to, you know, incur additional costs or risk. And that's just a cost that, you know, it may not want to happen a month from now. But as you need more parking, that versus the cost of building new parking is a, you know, more cost effective solution, you know? Parking garage today, twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars per space plus operating costs and things like that. So costs have struck, and I know, cost of structure parking, very expensive. And so maximizing vacant parking in a town, it'd be a privately owned, could be an effective solution. But, you know, the owner's gonna have to know that, hey, I don't want, so trip and fall, now I get sued and, you know, all that type of thing. So just wanted to add.
Trash removal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I believe there's also lighting requirements for, for parking spaces. Uh, you know, I don't know, it just, the, I, I'm sure it can be done. It just seems that that's an option that, that opens up kind of a can of worms in terms of what's, what's required liability wise uh, to now the city, uh, to use that. I mean, I, I guess the idea that, that you brought up of like, uh, have some spaces that are for employees, uh, they'll be out of the, you know, they're not out in front of the restaurant, I guess that's, that's a thought.
And keep in mind, I mean, if we have a parking space or anything else that's public parking, we have a liability issue with that also, so any new spaces that we create, there's always the li, you know, that's ongoing. Um, but anyway, those are interesting things to explore, like for the example with Truist Bank, councilman that you brought up, um, they're not open in the evenings. So perhaps looking at a lease agreement where the spaces are not, or for their customers only during their opening hours, but in the evenings, um, or on weekends, they're available. And, and I think like what you said is it's a one-on-one, it's gonna be different. It, it won't be the same agreement, most likely it will not be the same agreement. For every property, it'll just depend on, on what's possible, what we, our needs are and, um, how willing they are to work with us.
Absolutely, and they may be willing if you say, we're gonna have employee permits. And they're gonna be parking in these spaces only. And they may feel a little bit more secure knowing that it's going to be the same group of people that know the rules versus, you know, Joe Public who comes in, who doesn't. And if you have the same, you know, users, maybe that's their, their tolerance for it. And that's the difference between them being agreeable with you having a little bit more control over who's parking there and signing it accordingly. Looking at that marketing and communication plans, you know, really working through an advisory committee. This city has proven to be very vocal and involved, which is great. So continue using their involvement and keep them active and keep the transparency flowing onto all of these changes and why. And the good that's gonna come out, we're gonna free up more spaces by enforcing parking. So it's gonna be easier for you to find a parking space when you come down, downtown for lunch. That's the goal here. When you're coming down, you're not gonna have to circle a block three times. You'll be able to find that spot on Westward right where you want to go. Um, looking at all your signage, the top right corner, that was one of the towns that we were working with. And that's the marquee that they put in front of their parking area just to denote, that's the city's parking lot. And it could be simple, it could be bigger, it can be smaller, it's just something that's uniform and visible. And it gives that driver and the motorist, uh, you know, peace of mind that where they're parking is a, a place that they are supposed to be parking and they're okay. Um, looking at those pedestrian linkages, I talked a, a little bit in the report about crosswalks. I like delineating the walk area from roadway. You know, where there'd be pavement, you know, different textures. Or even my favorite is these elevated crosswalks with lights because it is very visible. They have other signs that are lighting up, it's all motion activated. So when somebody enters, the thing starts blinking like a Christmas tree. It's all about visibility and making people feel more comfortable. And it's also helps with traffic calming because these are elevated. So they are a form of a speed bump, which some people say no speed bumps. But if it's high pedestrian activity, we, we don't want them flying, we want them to slow down. And around that circle, there is a lot of high-speed traffic. And as soon as you get on Curtis, people are flying down there, which is one of the reasons why I liked the idea of angled parking, because if I have people parking in there, all of a sudden, if they're coming in and out, I have to go a lot slower down Curtis. I can't go fifty down that roadway because people are coming in and they're pulling and parking and pulling out. So some of these traffic calming measures are good. And they also curb that through traffic that's coming through and cutting through Miami Springs as well. Uh, I believe that's our last.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I just wanted to bring something up, thank you. I just wanted to bring something up, if, if you guys have a, the, the actual draft report on page sixteen, there's a picture of the Canal Street parking. And I think that, uh, I, I think Canal Street is, is one of the, the areas that has the, uh, the most potential in terms of, of, of parking spaces that, uh, cause the report said that, you know, our demand for parking isn't distributed, uh, throughout the available spaces. And we have a lot of spaces on Canal Street, but if you notice on that picture that's on page sixteen, there's, there's one street light like way down at the end. Uh, it, it strikes me that at night, parking there, I mean, sure, it's, it's a three, four minute walk. I, I don't think that that's terribly accessible. But I wouldn't want my wife parking there and, and walking towards, uh, the town center. Uh, and I think that, that could be one of the ways that we facilitate, you know, if we were to facilitate access to this parking, I think it would, uh, it would lessen, uh, some of the, the demand that we have, uh, I don't, I don't know, some kind of walkway or maybe additional lighting, I think that that would really allow us to leverage those spaces that we have. Uh, because I, I don't think that that's inviting at all, uh, you know, in terms of facilitating, you know, people parking there and walking to three minutes to go to Cebiches or, or something like that. I think that that's, that's a spot that, that, uh, I think that a little bit of planning there might, might go a long way in terms of helping.
You're correct, there is no sidewalk along Canal. Uh, parking on the side near the canal and then on the other one, it's just a swell with a lot of vehicles parked there. So if you're parked down there to walk in the roadway.
Yeah, and at night, the, the, the lighting is very inadequate. Again, I, I wouldn't want my wife, you know, to park there and have to walk, even though it's only two blocks. So I, I think that that really limits the, uh, our ability to leverage those spaces, right? Cause it's only a finite amount of spaces that we have and, and I, I don't think they're terribly accessible. Those spaces, right? Cause it's only a finite amount of spaces that we have and, and I, I don't think they're terribly accessible.
So I think what you're saying, Councilman, is that that is an area that we need to look at improvements. You know. I think marking the parking because the parking in a lot of those along Canal Street, you kind of see it, but you can't. Sometimes there's the concrete. Stop and sometimes there isn't. So improving all of that. And then also the lighting. In that area so that it is something that is an attractive public parking space. It's a very close walk. And if we make it attractive, it's also a pleasant. Walk, cause you know, it's along the waterway on the other side. Homes and restaurants.
On this, on this point. In addition to what the Councilman for head raises is that if you're walking along. That side of the parking on the, on the. North side of Canal. You get to the intersection of Curtis Parkway, you gotta cross Curtis Parkway. You gotta cross first Canal Street, across Canal Street. You got traffic coming off the bridge. Right? So that, that, that walkway right there is important. To also pay attention to. I don't know that people are crossing from that corner to Curtis Park, to one Curtis Parkway. There is another crosswalk down the block, but those are also, as we think about expanding options, and I agree with Councilman for head about this. Also, when you get to that place where you have to cross Canal Street. It needs to be. Well lighted, you know, well done as the other. Other crosswalks that we have in the city.
Yeah, when we're looking at these linkages, looking at, we all, we call those little friction points. Where you have to stop or completely wait for something. So at each one of these crosswalks, you know, it's, it's interrupting your, your travel time when you're trying to go to dinner. And so that negatively takes away from it and makes it feel like you're walking farther and farther.
Right. And you know, I just had a thought too, we're. Right now, thanks to. The interest of two very involved residents. We're looking at the project of lighting the bridges permanently, the bridges coming in, very attractive lighting. On those two historic bridges that we have. You know, that one of our residents did, I think it was this last Fourth of July, right? It was a temporary show and it was gorgeous and. Um, he and another resident that is very interested in, in this project are working with the city manager and assistant city manager. At expanding that and making it a permanent display. So you can visualize that, the beauty of, you know, the bridge lights and the different lights depending on the occasion. And expanding that whole Canal Street and making it a very attractive place to walk and, you know, well lit and. I think there's a lot of opportunity there to turn something that, you know, is, is right now. Unattractive and. But it's certainly available.
Yeah, Canal may be wide enough to pull those spaces off of the canal side and create a walkway there as well.
Okay.
Which if you're lighting up the bridges, I would imagine that's a nice walk all of a sudden.
I think it's a great point. I'm looking at the trees along Canal. You can uplight though.
It could be a very special desirable, you know, and especially after dinner that you stroll in there to your car and so I. And, and it's available to us. It's certainly, we're looking for areas that are easily available. This is low hanging fruit.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other discussion?
It's working now.
So I guess from my end, I would say, where do you suggest we go from here? And first of all, thank you for the report. I think it's.
Yes, thank you.
You know what I like about it is it's very clear. What you've presented to us, I think we can follow along with it easily and I, anyone in the community that's interested can certainly do that. Um, you've brought up a lot of, of things that need improvement. Some of them are, I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, these are things we can easily do. You know, um, and other things are obviously much more long-term. Um, building a parking garage is, you know, a big investment and we have to do that. And, and I want to mention. To people who think we need the parking garage, I'm not saying we don't need it at all, but that's not gonna allow you, a parking garage is not, still not gonna allow you to park in front of the post office. You know, or sushi, sake or whatever. You're going to have to walk two or three blocks to the parking garage. So you know, every, I've heard this so much. We need a parking garage because I can't park in front, you know, where I want to go. It's still not gonna happen. So.
We have to implement these things first before we go there. See if they work or they don't work, but there's a lot of stuff where it's possible that's gonna work. And it's just a matter of enforcing it.
And I think one of the big things is the parking management plan is getting started on that, like for us to really. Look at these areas, decide, we'll have to tweak it down the road. Nothing's ever permanent, but something that we feel comfortable that addresses the, the needs of. Um, the residents, the visitors and. The business owners and makes it attractive, desirable, because I, I think that's ultimately what we also want is to. Um, improve the, the economic vitality of, you know, of our business district to make it more desirable and a pleasant place to visit.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I think you're absolutely right. I think that's where we go next. I think that's where we've got to. Kind of put on the agenda and say, okay, how do we? How do we develop this?
And can you give us some suggestions? Um, is there, are there templates to kind of get started or is this something that every city kind of does on their own and?
Every city is unique. And you have your own user groups and demands and needs and infrastructure. So you will need to have. You know, a group look at your infrastructure available. And if I was doing it, I would say this is what I have at my disposal. Where are the optimal places for me to put? And I would start at customers and visitors. They're spending money. Where do I want them to have the most access to? And then after them, I would look at employees, cause they're here daily. And then sometimes residents are a little bit easier, because a lot of times they're storing cars. So I would, you know, do almost a hierarchy and pick a plan and see how that looks. And it might look great. And then you can start to implement, you know, measure, you know, management tools. To distribute your parking demand for those. Spaces accordingly. So you may have one lot that's for visitors. So you may not have any time restrictions because you have visitors that are here more than two hours. They need a place to go. And so you can direct them to these two or three locations. And then you may want to direct your employees to other locations. And then you may want to hold off other places for your residents. So. It's going to be a, a game of moving things around and saying what looks the best, what works the best. And what's best for the whole. You're not gonna make everybody happy, no matter what, but. You're trying to do this.
The hierarchy because of customers and visitors. You know, we all like all these different options that we're getting for restaurants. But it's almost like, uh, super important that we make sure they're successful and customers and visitors are part of that.
Yes.
Cause if this time around, these businesses fail. It's gonna be a long time. Before we get another influx of development. And I don't mean town center development, I mean. New restaurants, change of use within the same buildings. So customers and visitors are definitely should be a priority.
Yeah.
And in that I argue, but it's definitely crucial and we want this thriving downtown that we keep talking about.
Councilman, and I think there, there's a lot of low hanging fruit because like you brought up on morning side, and I know we looked at it in the past. You know, it hasn't improved enough. We looked at making some tweaks and we had, did a walkthrough. Behind the post office. It's very confusing still. I think we added a parking, public parking. I would never, this is no towing, do not enter, whatever, but then we have public parking, but then it's police here. I mean. And I think we added one, you know, probably it's still. Unless, I would be very hesitant as a visitor. We all know where we can park and we can't. So.
Right.
You're right. What we need to address right now is make sure that especially. Where it's easy to do by providing enough signs and I'd rather have too many signs for parking than not enough. Because we're expecting a lot of new businesses and they want to have visitors, you know, have a place to park. So we need to really address that. Um, we have signs on Westward Drive that are faded. You know, so there's a sign there, you can kind of tell what it is, but it's impossible to read it.
No, there are areas that are like all public, no lighting.
And I don't think that those are things we need the master plan, although they'd be included in the master plan, but those are things we can get started on right now. I mean, that they're as clear as the, you know, nose in front of our face.
One of the things I first noticed is when I parked at the lot behind Starbucks. The first time I didn't know how to get out of there. After being near county cars for a few days, I realized there's a walkway that connects that lot right to Starbucks. But the way it is, the condition of it, I would never use it. So I'm like, these are little passeos. That could be great linkages. So if I put everybody in the circle and I direct them to this lot, I can start pushing people back there. Make that an attractive walkway. This is the way, you don't need to park right in front of them on the circle. Go back there, take your time, park your car, walk through the passeo, you're at the circle. Right? So little things and identifying these walkways and making them attractive. Makes people feel like they're walking less. And they're happy.
Thank you. I think another item we can start implementing now, which I think. I think it's listed as to, to hire, we said a PSA. Um, to start reinforcing and, which is one of your recommendations, what we have now. So what we have now, we do have signs where it says, do not park at any time. And we're really not reinforcing that. So I think we should. Try to get on that now, start bringing some revenue so we can start.
Um, well, and the equipment, I think, cause it's, if we're going to hire someone, I don't want them just to look for a do not park. I want them to, I mean, I would like them to. Um, also be enforcing where it says two hour parking. That's two hours. So I think we need to invest also in the equipment that they would need of, you know, to, to. And I know we have discussed this. Past with our police and they feel they don't have the time to enforce parking. So a dedicated one or two staff members that that's all they do. In New York, that's what they do is, you know, they're, they are not police officers. They're hired just to walk around the block and give tickets, give tickets and give tickets. Right? And. And while I don't want. You know, people to, to feel like they're constantly getting tickets, if it says two hour parking, then that, you know, we need to respect that and. And make sure that we have somewhere that they can park, you know, if they're here to work for eight hours, that they don't have to run out every two hours and. Cause that's totally, you know. Not reasonable for us to, to just leave it at that.
On that point, Mayor, we might just start it off with, with maybe a week or two of warnings.
Yes, absolutely. No, we need to surely, or even a month or so. Anything changes.
Chief wants to say something, which is perfect that he's here.
You mean chief, he. He's our new chief.
Your first comments.
Quickly, I've emailed all of you. A map that shows all the existing signage in the business district. As of December first, we had a, a conference call. It was one of the things that was brought up. We sent out one of our PSAs, he mapped it. There is a very large area of Canal Street, Westward. Parts of the business district, there's no signage at all, especially around the town center. When you were talking about getting the equipment and everything and the people to do this. Think we should start off with their recommendation with the striping to make. Parking spaces, especially along Canal Street, Westward Drive, that will serve as, if there's three cars that could fit there, you won't have the two car issue anymore. Replacing bad signage, placing new signage, have everything uniform. You guys also need to decide. What's overnight parking? Five hours, six hours. If less, more, that's another thing. And then those signs, you don't put up signs that say no overnight parking, no parking over this many hours. The ALPRs for the vehicles. It's just like Pay to Park has that. This is digital chalking. This is what we said, right now, the only way our people can do the time slots, sorry to say. Is to chalk tires or take photos, which they don't have issued cell phones, our, our officers and public service aides. We don't like them to use that because then it could be subpoenaed in court and that could be an issue. So parking right now is more. The problem areas, we don't have any signage right there. So with that's, start off with the basics, get that streamlined and then get the equipment we need. I like the recommendation about the two parking enforcement officers. However, we would need more than that because obviously this is gonna be a twenty-four seven issue. Because of the town center finally opening the apartments. It will need those people there at night doing this. That's where.
And those employees would be under the police department, not under code enforcement?
I would, it would be much easier for us because the parking citations go right through our, our records division, just as we do now. And the fines, it depends upon how you want it streamlined. As it is now, uh, any fines that are, uh, received for parking, go to clerk of the courts. And we get that breakdown with speeding tickets, red light cameras and other things.
They go to clerk of the courts. It's ours clerk of the courts or Miami date, no Miami date, okay.
And, and to the question that was asked. To the question that was asked earlier, uh, there is a split with the clerk of courts. They receive, I think a dollar fifty. We did an agreement with them in another municipality that was implementing a new parking program. And as part of that, in addition to doing an agreement with pay by phone, they did an agreement with the clerk of courts. They did an agreement for the equipment that the clerk of courts provides. So there's, there's like a whole stream of things that.
Right. I mean, there's already uniform prohibited parking. There is a fine set with that through the county that when we issue those citations where there's that signage. There is a set fine for it. Now, as you get into times and things like that, that's where you'll have to go back and, uh, just do a little bit of research and figure out how you want to find people for that.
Chief, the, um, the areas throughout the city that do say no parking anytime. Those, I know your officers are for the most part issuing tickets there. So that could continue.
Oh, yes.
As that.
Absolutely.
So the, the main issue that we need to look at. With this is where we say time limits is having the, the.
And we do have time limit parking throughout the city, different places, signage looks different, unfortunately, in some places because of the age of some of the signs. Um, I also sent you the same map. Just a matter of, like I said, uh, I would start off that, from that, once that's set up. Makes things a lot easier. And I still don't, I mean, I know of one handicap spot at the town center that has not been marked yet at all. It's the first one next to Paco's Way. I can only tell it is because it's so wide. That's, that's one, that's an ADA spot that they don't have on their list.
Okay.
So if anything else.
Thank you, Chief, very much. And, and last, if, would you like to? To give us your input?
Good evening, um, Councilman for yet. I'm gonna pick your brain. Are you there? Yeah. I'm gonna pick your brain, um, two years ago. Correct me if I'm wrong. You brought it up to Alonso about striping Westward Drive. And once we did a count, we lost parking. Do you remember that?
Don't, but, but keep going.
No, well, I just want to bring up like striping Westward Drive, that was already.
Was that angle parking or that you were saying parallel?
No, right out here, all these four blocks, what we considered downtown. Once it was all measured out, you lost part. If I'm not mistaken, you lost like four part spots. Because now it's open, it's free, like free for all. I have somebody with a big. Truck. Then the next person that come two small vehicles. So that was done two years ago.
How was that done? How did you figure that out?
Measured it out. You know, a, a parallel parking spot is X, X amount. You, you measure and you, you divide it and you get your spots. You gotta take consideration the corners. Where you gotta do your striping for, for radius. So it, it, and you lost like four spots.
And do you remember, was that four spots on each side, westward or?
Spots on each side.
On each side.
Yeah, on the north side and the south side, yeah. I mean, we could always revisit. But this was done once already. So we determined, we decided just leave it.
And that's because if we're going to designate spots, they have to be a consistent, there, there's probably a standard that you have to.
Right. And then there's, there's.
Right now, if you're a smaller car, you kind of squeeze in.
So you take the length, you divided it into the next, let's say the nineteenth. So then you. You probably have a half a spot. So that half a spot, you lost it. You gotta stripe it. And that's it. It's gone. You lost it. So. We visited not full force, just did kind of like a little estimate. Yeah, we measured it out, divided. And we did lose spots, just bringing that up.
That's good.
I mean, we could revisit it again, do it, you know, a little better, but just to bring it up that it was done once and.
And I guess the trade-off is. You know, there are certain times, it depends on when the cars are parked, but obviously if the cars are coming and going and, you know, a small car, if I'm driving a small car, I can squeeze in. But then I pull out and something else comes that, you know, it, it's a little more variable depending on the vehicles and the time that they're there.
And also the county didn't help out putting those fire hydrants. Whenever we did, uh, the new water lines.
Yeah.
Like in front of Leonard on, on the side of, uh. Where the Greek deli's at. They, so right now they're not marked off. So it's supposed to be, you know.
Through the chair.
Okay, yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, I just, to, to. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I, I never spoke with, with William or anybody about, uh, I'm glad that you guys calculated. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. I I never spoke with with William or anybody about, uh, I'm glad that you guys calculated it before. Before dividing it up. I know that, you know, parallel parking is difficult, you know, making it into prescribed spaces, uh, I don't know that that would be worth it, but. That wasn't me that talked to William about that, but I'm glad that you guys calculated it before doing anything because that makes sense.
I think that was a recommendation from the possibly from early on, the business.
The Business and Economic Development Task Force.
Somebody who was interested in.
Thank you, Liz.
Captain Neil.
Laz, was there anything else you wanted to bring our attention to? Thank you, you and Chief Liz for being here, obviously our residents too for. Listening, Liz, is there anything, your thoughts on? Okay. Okay.
Well, Canal Street needs it, that's for sure.
Our city manager.
Mayor, I just.
What are your thoughts?
I just wanted to provide one one point of clarification when you were discussing earlier, the the one town center and the shared parking. Um, as Tammy mentioned in the parking study that. That the consult, that the developer did as part of the approval process, it did say there that the entire facility would be shared. However, in the site plan approval that the council approved, and in the memo, it indicated. That only the first floor was going to be shared. So that hasn't changed, that I know of, I nothing that that still stands. So the first floor is shared, and then from the second up is off limits only for.
And and honestly, I don't know that that's necessarily bad because the residents have a place to park. They have those two floors, you know, and if we're looking at the whole picture of, you know, parking and whether we limit after overnight parking and everything like this. They have dedicated areas to park. So I personally, I I see that that to me is a positive. You know, they have two floors to park in as residents.
Yeah, three floors.
Through the chair, please.
Second, third and fourth. Right. Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just, uh, the reason I brought it up, uh, I I. My understanding early on was that there would be one floor that would be shared and the rest would be residents. It's just that I think early on. It was going to be a gate because obviously enforcement, uh, it would be the key, right? You could save the top three floors or it could be marked, but unless uh they're enforced, and it strikes me. That enforcement of those parking spaces being just for residents is going to fall on that development and the leadership of that development. Because if it's not enforced, and what's going to happen is residents are going to come home, not find a spot, and then they're going to. Good park in a public spot somewhere because there's no parking available to them. So in in concept and in principle, I don't see a problem with it. It's just that if there isn't going to be a gate, which was the initial idea, then I. Think that for the purposes of our public spaces not being taken up, I think that we should get clarity about how they're going to enforce that the top three floors. Are for residents only because the that that would then encroach on our spots. If they can't, uh, if they can't protect their own spots that are supposed to be dedicated for residents.
Well, and I think the alter- alternative way to look at that is if we limit, which is something that I know I discussed with you when we had the public workshops, is. Um, overnight parking, you know, because overnight parking, if you're, people are working remote now a lot. So overnight parking doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to leave at seven thirty in the morning to go to work. It just means, you know, that's your parking space and it's on the street and it's taking up. So for me, I and I haven't given this a lot of thought, but I think we really have to restrict overnight parking. And I believe the way to do that, and again, I haven't given it a lot of thought, but the easiest way to do that is say no parking between. Uh, two P, two AM and five AM or two AM and even four AM. And then if we have an FTD or an officer goes by and there's parking during that time, that's a citation, but it makes it so that. You can't just park your car there forever. You'll, you know, if you plan to have use public parking that we need. And we don't want it used for um overnight parking, um, you'd have to get up at two in the morning, move your car. So it's less likely, and that in itself would encourage areas where they do have their own parking to enforce their own parking. To make sure that the parking is available for their residents. You know what I'm saying? On the backend, that would encourage. If we're talking about one particular area, um, that they would monitor their areas and make sure it's available for the residents.
Well, that one is important, the sooner the better.
Through the chair, one quick question. Um, so the first floor is going to be for retail and restaurants, correct?
Yeah, and customers or the employees.
And our offices are on the second floor, correct?
What?
No, there are no offices.
Any offices?
No.
Only on the first floor, yeah.
The rest is residential.
How many spaces are there on the first floor? Do we know?
Seventy, is it?
So Mayor, the other tool you can use is you could start enforcing that two hour time limit earlier so that you push them out. So you could start enforcing it at six AM. So that if somebody is staying overnight or they come at five AM. At six AM, the clock's going to start and at eight AM, they're going to be over that two hour time limit and need to move their car for business owners and customers to come. In and, you know, get those spaces and use those spaces. Okay.
Twenty-eight spaces.
Or whoever you have designated.
Right, because it's mainly that we we want it open for when, I see what you're saying. It's not necessarily that we need it open at between two and four AM, but we want it open for. Right, exactly. So I see what you're saying. That's.
First floor had, the first floor has twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay. JC, is there anything else that you want to bring up, listening to these?
I do think that um, and I myself. You notice a lot of park, public parking over here, public, and when you look, you you really can't find the public parking. Um, there's, there's, uh, speaking with Tammy and Public Works earlier, there is certain room for improvement and Dr. Fahad alluded to it as far as on Canal. Um, we want to improve that area. Um. But when you think about it, it's just a little more than just striping or 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 doing that. We have to. In Canal, we'd have to do curbing. Um, we'd also, Dr. Fahad mentioned, Councilman Fahad mentioned lighting. And and then this just occurred while we were here, possibly a walkway, because if somebody parks all the way at the end. And then all the, where are they gonna, how are they gonna walk? They're gonna be walking pretty much on the street. So you may want, we may want to provide a walkway so that they can connect all the way to the circle or to Curtis. Um, and then, and then I believe. And although funding is tight, um, you know, we, another thing we would want to look at is improving and they they. Vicky mentioned it, the uh, the the parking lot behind the Starbucks. Invest some money and re, because it was restripped, but the asphalt was in pretty rough shape.
Lighting also.
Resurface it, uh, fix some some of the lighting and really promote it and say, hey, we got. Once people start seeing that we're investing in parking and start noticing a difference, the perception starts changing and and people start using it and. Maybe the problem gets a little better.
And I think with public parking, we need to, because again, we're so familiar with Miami Springs, we think, you know, know where it is. Public parking, when I'm in another location. I see the big sign and I go there and then I need to know exactly when I look to the left, where's the next sign and where's the, you know, it's got to be connected dots that I. It's not just way, if I look all the way, I can kind of see a sign at the end, and I think we need to do a better job with that of. Big green public parking signs, and every time you get to that sign, you know, there's an arrow to. Point you and and direct you there because what we're really trying to do is is make it easier for visitors to. To not have that questionable. Um, I was just thinking even on Curtis Parkway, we have the. The permeable pavers, and the reason I say permeable is because I really. Hope that whatever parking we create down the road, whenever possible, we make it permeable, which allows less, causes less stormwater runoff. Allows the water, the rainwater to percolate to the ground, and that's why I like that one so much. It, you know, it it's not a. An asphalt, it's kind of, uh, it provides parking there for Papa John's and all those businesses that wanted it, but. It's, you know, it's fine. It looks, I wouldn't say it's super attractive, but it's not unattractive either. Um, but even there, we don't have any information. So if you didn't know, you wouldn't know, you know, can I park there? Is it okay? You'd be questioning that. And we need to probably put up signs there too of, um. Um, and perhaps they don't have to be so high, you know, just kind of a a small uh sign every so often of public parking between these hours. Um, and by the way, that's something that we did at the um, uh, that uh Public Works did at um the rec center, excuse me, the senior center. Um, and Prince Field, well, Prince Field, the parking that you provided there with the rocks, and I think you're doing it at PB Field too. That's, and and you guys came up with that idea, right? And it's been a few years, Laz. I I'm really impressed with that because it's been a few years. It works really well. It looks good. It, you know, the water percolates through it. It provides when it rains, it doesn't flood. It's, you know, you you have easy walking there. I mean, it's walking over little rocks and pebbles, but. Um, just I I think that was a great idea, Laz. Thank you. I, um, and it provides a lot of of parking along Prince Field that was badly needed. Um, okay, so Tammy, how about you? Do you have, after everything you've heard, you've been so involved with all these. Um, issues with the county, I mean, with the city, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, probably everything that we've mentioned tonight, we've, we collectively have thought about. Um, but yes, I agree. Uh, and and again, it all takes money. So, um, and it takes a well thought out plan. And, um, you know, I know we added a lot of spaces, like you mentioned, Mayor, but we also have to think of um ADA compliance too. Just adding the spaces doesn't mean anything. That's great for parking. But we al- also have to consider that these are projects that were that were adding to the benefit of the the entire city, which includes ADA compliance.
Okay, um, that's a good point.
You know, so we have to really keep that in mind when we start doing some of these spaces as well. Um, no, I mean, it's, it's, you know.
And one thing I wanted to mention with that, when you're saying is the two um electric vehicle chargers. That we, FPNL, a few years back, when we put our first electric vehicle charger by the golf course. Which is a great location because you can play golf and charge your vehicle. And FPNL, this is probably four years ago, I don't even remember, they offered, we paid for that one and put it, and then FPNL had a program where they were um, uh. Providing them for communities and they um allocated two for us to put anywhere we want. We asked them to hold off because we were. The project was starting at that time, the one town center, and we wanted to figure out where to put it on Canal Street. Um. So is that still, did you reach out to them? Is that?
That was through FPNL level solution.
Right.
Um, I can't find anybody that knows or remembers that.
Okay, I know somebody at, um. So FPNL, who's a resident here, who is the one that kind of gave us the project with the underground lines.
I have the.
So I'll reach out to him and see if he can, um. If that's still available, then that's something too we should consider. And I know EV vehicles right now are kind of, you know, they're not moving as fast as they were, but clearly that's something. That we need to plan for the future. I mean, um, you know, that that everyone was buying them and now they've kind of slowed down and who knows, you know, in a year or two, you know, those things fluctuate. So I think. Come to, um, Liz, so we can hear you.
There's a with, we've been doing this for a year. Um, working with Vicky, working with her team, and so many discussions that we have just from all of the needs that everybody. Brings to us and we listen to all of your meetings as well. Um, LSVs, you know, we're a community that we want folks to come to our city center, but how do we accommodate them? So an LSV is going to take a full parking spot, right? So can we accommodate, and when I say low, it's a low speed vehicle, what we quote unquote, a golf cart, right? You see them all over the city. I see them during the day. I see them at night. Um, how do we also attract our residents to, they can bring those vehicles as well? Now, I don't know about lights, so I'm going to have to defer to the new chief to tell us, you know, the drivability at night, what it, what is required. I know we have those guidelines, but are we considering that maybe those families like to go out? It's a beautiful night. The weather's great. How do I provide parking for those?
Why wouldn't they park in a regular parking lot?
Well, they can take a regular parking space, but that regular parking space is nineteen feet. So now I just took that away from a, from a regular sized vehicle is what I'm trying to say.
I see.
So if you're marking on.
Considering that maybe.
Designated.
Right, maybe you.
LSV parking.
Two spots and you turn those into five LSVs. Well, now I don't have an SUV with three kids and two parents, right? Taking up a larger spot, they come in their LSV and it's great. I can accommodate them. So now I have more space.
And less carbon traffic.
Correct. So now I have.
Very good.
Yeah, so it's, it's, there's a lot.
Mm-hmm.
There, there's a lot. We've had that discussion, so she nods because we had that discussion. You know, so how do we accommodate them? There's one particular spot at the town center. Right as you're turning in, doesn't matter, it's the first one, where it's small. We thought about it. Hey, do we market for motorcycle? Do we market for LSV? And that was a conversation we had uh with Laz, you know. Let's turn this into an LSV. So let's promote it a little bit because we can't use it for a regular spot just because of the way.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the measurements that you have. Um, so how can we also get our residents not to bring in their big vehicles? And bring in these LSVs that they've invested in, they use to pick up their kids from school all day long. I mean. We're on that main thorough.
All right, no, that's.
So we see it. Oh, that's a consideration.
Are they allowed, Chief, are they allowed to to operate those at night? Okay, as long as they're equipped for, we're on the road.
For the conversation.
Because I guess also in that motorcycle parking, you bring up another thing that we don't want a motorcycle taking up an entire space if we can designate some areas. I don't know how many motorcycles we see parked here. I don't see that many, but.
All our LSVs that are, the way that we set everything up, which in my opinion is the right way, have to get them registered. So they.
He needs you to speak more into that, sorry.
It's all street legal. So they have headlights, they have brake lights, they operate the proper, you know, it's just like having a regular car.
Okay.
And so long as we keep it that way, you won't have that issue, uh, people driving around without lights.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
So Tammy, did you have anything else from the, that you're thinking of after hearing all this?
You had asked for some more information about the parking of the employees, so.
Oh, yes, I asked for our city, just to get an idea in our city hall. How many employees do we have? Not like Liz and Laz that, you know. Have their offices elsewhere but come visit, but just that are working here at the eight hours a day and are parking.
In the alley parking, which is behind like um the the building right here, the yellow building right here, we have five employees. On Westward Drive, which is the on-street parking on Westward Drive, we have seven. Around and behind the women's club, we have four. And then we have two that park at the rec center and switch out vehicles, which is our code enforcement officers.
So is that all the employees that we have?
That's all of the.
Parking, okay. That's not, that's better than I thought that we were taking up a lot of spaces, so.
They're moving to other places. I thought that maybe they were going behind the post office, but they're not. So. They're actually helping out by using these other areas that nobody seems to want to go to. So that's thankful in that sense.
Okay.
It's not bad.
That's good to know. And I wish we had had more input from the business owners, um, you know, of knowing what they need of, uh. You know, how many spaces they would like to see because it's not just for their customers, but you know, for their employees. Um. One second, I just wrote down some things on here. I wanted to make sure we covered. Okay, so I think we all agree on the master plan.
Yes.
We, I, in hearing, I I think we're all agree that we don't have to wait for the master plan to tackle some of the things that you've seen, some of the easy suggestions that we can improve. That we can get started on that. There's no reason to have to wait to write that out. If, you know, better signage where we can provide it for. Parking on morning side, making clear, you know, and I I agree, it's totally confusing. You see no stopping, no stopping. You know, toe away, toe away, and then there's three spots or four spots. What does that mean? So we need to clarify that's public parking. Um, the master plan, I'm still not sure how we go about that.
Just wanted to, we worked at the municipality, I thought was great. So obviously through the report, you have a lot of options and a lot, and and you've used the word low hanging fruit, which I agree with you. And the best thing that I saw this municipality, they tracked all of their desired outcomes, you know. Okay, let's assume out of all the recommendations, you're going to focus on ten or fifteen and, you know, be it, and until you've got a great staff, obviously, you've heard from everybody. And maybe members, you know, members who with council that, there's a quarterly tracking of, you know, a document, what's gotten done, what's, you know, what's the goal, what's the the initiative? And, you know, what's the status? Because the worst thing, and Vicky's probably seen a lot of them, you get a study like this done, sounds great, goes on a shelf. And you're talking about it again, doing another study in five years. So I think it's just really about how you can really take the recommendations, choose your priorities. And and, you know, track, you know, track them as you go forward and.
And and thank you for saying that because I'm going to make a suggestion. Um, this is a workshop, so we don't vote, but that one year from now. That we have our goal, and I can't say what it'll be, but that our goal one year from now will be to. Look at what, how we've improved parking situation, what changes we've done, and that hopefully we'll have the parking planned by then, we'll start working on things because you're right. We'll start working on things, because you're right, sometimes there's so much going on, we set it aside that we mean to, but that our goal is, you know, within one year, and then another year after that. Obviously, we're not gonna get all of this done. But I think that there, this is a reasonable task, that within one year, we should see significant improvements in the parking situation. And we'll build from there. And I wanted to ask, I forgot, yeah, our planner is here, Sylvia, from everything you've heard. You wanna come up and make any suggestions?
Through through the chair, just wanna on on the, what the suggestion that you just made is that, I appreciate that. Uh, a year from now, but I would suggest that we try to tease that out a little bit. Not tonight, as to what we would like to see a year from now, at least some.
Yes, and that'll be part of the parking plan and all, but I'm saying, let's, you know, let's make a commitment that, you know, we're looking for. Sylvia, did you wanna mention anything? Okay, okay, I wanted to make sure. Okay, and I'm gonna do something else. I, we have a few residents that have been patiently here. And even if you didn't speak before, if there's something that you wanna say, because it's really important, your input, two minutes, if you'd like to come up. Neri Owens, come on up. And for two minutes, please, we don't want to long, but just give us your thoughts on on what you've heard.
I have to say, after having worked at the airport, that this traffic study is excellent. I only have a couple of comments. And they're mostly typographical errors. On page five, the first photo is Thirty-Sixth Street, not Thirty-S sixth Avenue. On page twenty-two, just to show that I did read it. Holy smoke, manager, you left the A out after between N and G. And on page twenty-four, number four. I don't understand the sentence. I think that needs a little bit more clarity. But it does not affect the totality of the report. So if you could please look at page twenty-four, number four. It would help. But you've done an outstanding job, and I don't ever give anybody an A plus. Tonight, you have an A plus, Vicky. Thank you.
Uh, and I can vouch for that from this resident, Neri Owens, um and her sister Grace, um she doesn't give an A plus very frequently. Is there anyone else that wants to speak to anyone online? Yes, yes, two minutes.
Hi, Noel Gonzalez again. Um, just now that I've heard more of the plan, um again, I I really was impressed. I thought it was good as well. I think a lot of the stuff that we're focusing on that here today is in the right direction. I think the time limits on parking in those um desirable spots is really important. But I think that so much hinges on changing residents' behavior and expectations. I see a lot of people who really truly expect that they're owed a parking space right in front of a restaurant that serves, you know, fifty patrons, and how is that gonna work? So, you know, just just biking here tonight, I passed by, for example, the Baptist Church, and the study extends all the way back to the Baptist Church. There wasn't a single person parked in front of the Baptist Church. In fact, every time I go downtown to eat at a restaurant, I've never seen anyone parked that far back. So how do we encourage people, especially our residents, who I know enjoy walking? And when they're given a nice experience, their behavior will change. Just look at how many people use the bike path on Westwood Drive. I've lived in Miami Springs my whole life. When that bike path opened up along Westwood Drive, I saw a huge increase in the number of people just walking every day. So how do we extend that? Get those same pedestrians who are willing to walk their children in their strollers, their kids on scooters, whatever. They're willing to walk from Ludlum all the way, you know, to Prince Field, all the way to the library, because it's such a nice walk. How do we get that same mindset and get them to walk from the Baptist Church to the sushi restaurant? You know, it's, you make it a nice walk and you extend some of these walkways, some of these walkways that are really nice, they just end. You know, that wa- that bike path on Westwood Drive, it just ends. And then you're like, okay, well, where do I go now? So making those bike paths and walk paths just keep going. And even if it means diverting traffic, even if it means lowering speed limits, even if it means, you know, losing a parking space here and then, just here and there, just to get a better pedestrian crosswalk. I think it's worth it, because it'll be something to change behavior. So we shouldn't be afraid to get rid of a parking space here or there, if it means, well, okay, this will be a crosswalk now, and we'll get more people walking, because, you know, they live a few blocks away, and they don't feel like they can walk, but now they can. Um, just making those experiences kind of like more built into the city. Because I think everyone agrees that the thing that makes Miami Springs great is low traffic and walkability. Like, that's what makes it feel small, is like, obviously, the circle's the one place where we don't have low traffic. But um, I think that changing the residents' behavior is gonna be a little trickier. But I I think it's possible, because I've seen it done with other pathways that we that we have, that we didn't have when, you know, fifteen years ago, at, because I remember, we didn't have that. So um, I think it's possible. I just, I I really think we need to focus on making the walking and the biking just so easy, so second nature, that like, everybody wants, like, you want to walk, you know, like, you you wanna like, oh, let's. Like, the the plan around Canal Street that was discussed, I think that's, that's exactly what I'm talking about. But like, on Westwood, it should be like that. On Curtis, it should be like that. Curtis is obviously a beautiful walk. Um, so it shouldn't be a pain to park far on Curtis and walk. It should be like, oh, okay, like, this is just what we do. We park over here, and then we walk, walk, and it's nice.
So thank you.
Okay, thanks.
We're, um, I think we're all in agreement with that yet, sir.
Uh, because I I had highlighted on page forty-eight of the study, something that goes right to the point that she's making.
Grammar?
I I wouldn't disagree, I wouldn't disagree on enhancing the walk, right? That, because three hundred and sixty-two folks said they walk at least, you know, five minutes. Which tells me something about people already walking. Yes, there are those folks who don't wanna walk. And and, but, you know, it's it's, I would say, let's accentuate the fact that three, three quarters of the folks who responded say they'll walk. They usually park and they'll walk five minutes or less, so. Um, and and it's making it attractive, you know. We talked about in the business development, you know, west, westward as enhancing that walk as well. So make it pleasant, nice walk, you're gonna get a nice dinner, you're gonna get a nice walk. And you're gonna walk off the dinner on the way back on a nice walk. So thank you for bringing that up.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
I think that uh back to you, the point is you, the young lady just brought up. And making this a more pedestrian friendly and so forth, and I think it all starts back with the circle. And it's, I'm gonna do my best, okay, I promise you that. Our administration, our council, we gotta stop allowing the best we can. Because, you know, they they can throw their muscle around, the county road, the the county. They need to, we make it a point that we're gonna create an environment, a thriving downtown, that our pedestrians are gonna be using. Children, all kind of walk life. You need to make it safer. Believe me, if we put enough pressure, there should be some changes. We just always resisted to do this, because we, those are the big boys in town, they're not gonna listen to us, so it never really happens. Yes, they're gonna probably say that they've done this before. It's not true. Not to the point of fighting hard, okay? Fighting hard, saying, no, this is where it's gonna stop. The day the children gets killed here, we're coming after you. Because changes that were done here before came from people that weren't really very involved with county politics, and they got it done. So I think it's our responsibility, and I like your idea, and I'm gonna do my part in really, you know, maybe it goes in deaf ears, but we need to put the pressure on them. Because this is the type of town we want, this downtown thriving area where everybody walks around, she's telling you to bicycle, all this stuff, it will work and would help. Yet we keep saying, well, the circles, they're not gonna do anything about it. Why?
I'm not sure what you mean, because the circle, they did do.
Yeah, the ladies that got it done.
They, we put in, they, the county put in the pedestrian that we asked for that, and they cut out. Which there was a ton of resistance from our community of, you're making the circle cutting out roadway. And in actuality, what it does is it discourages people from the cut-through traffic, because there's less roadway. Now it is, and our community uh was very opposed to that, and it was the county working with us to improve the use of the circle. Um, since that's happened, if you think about it, when you get to the circle, the the gazebo and everything is right there in your face, it's wonderful. Before, it used to be like this little narrow thing, you know, in the center, and now it's like a real park and all, so I'm not saying we can't go forward, but.
Fair enough, in all fairness to those that fought for those things, I'm just saying, like, Westwood Drive, getting to the circle. The biggest problem in the circle is that area from the corner of Curtis to the other corner of Curtis. So to me, just fighting that little, that little area.
I think.
Be enough to make an impact.
Well, and also, and also, and and to your point, Councilman, um, the circle is going to be, you know, town center, when it opens, um, is going to be a very different location than it was before. So that in itself, I believe requires the county to reevaluate the pedestrian access and movability and everything, especially with the parking spaces and all this, of making sure that um we do significant, that they do significant improvements on there, because it's it's not, we're not, we can't work on there, it's their road. But absolutely, with the changes that are coming and everything, and we can start on that now, because saying, you know, you need to relook it.
They have to.
The number of residents are gonna be living right here on the circle. And improve their accessibility, and they shouldn't have to get in their car to cross the street to go to the other side of the circle, so I think that's a really good point.
If I could.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I agree one hundred percent with what Councilman said. We need help with really hitting the county hard, saying, you know what, we are a walkable town. We need more crosswalks in our circle. Liz, Laz, and I face it almost every day with every single project that we do. The county pushes back hard on us and gives us a hard time to um to do certain things here. And I think you're a hundred percent correct. We need to push back harder on them and say, you know what, these things need to be done. This is our town. These are our residents, and we need these bike paths, these pedestrian paths, these crosswalks that are gonna allow the safety. I looked into the humps for you, um, for the circle. That was not going anywhere.
The speed, right, we had looked at um speed controls.
Not the, not the, the lump.
Right, right, the humps, right, right. Which we listened to that on Curtis and everything.
For the, for the.
Curtis and uh.
And they just.
But I think.
It it has a requirement and.
And large requirements.
Looked into it because of our concerns.
On another, on other projects.
Not another project, and a road that has lots of, you know, um higher than the speed limit is, let's say. One of our, the, one of the items that is required for any type.
Oh, Liz, I'm sorry, you have to come up.
One of the items that's required on any traffic calming device, and a hump, a speed bump, whatever length it is, a table, it can also be called a speed table. Requires a traffic study.
Yes.
You have to have a minimum of vehicles traveling that roadway in order for it to even be considered. Chief will tell you that to get a four-way stop sign doesn't happen. I have a request in my email right now that is requesting a four-way stop sign. And I know it's not gonna happen, because we don't have, as much as we think that we have a lot of traffic, we don't have enough of it to be able to justify, that was the word for today, how how the county tells us, justify it. I can't justify it when I have fourteen thousand residents. I can't. It's very difficult.
I mean, and they're talking about counts of like eight, nine, ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
We'll never get that amount in our, in our little city.
That's correct, so the.
As much as we think we have a lot of traffic, we'll never get that amount of traffic going through there. And these are the types of accounts that the county is requiring us to to.
Okay, but I I think with the whole, I think with what we need to do is, and I know this was brought up, in fact, when the circle, which all we wanted to do at the time with the circle was create pedestrian accessibility, and then the county said, well, we're gonna do this, but your circle doesn't meet, remember, and it was like a whole big, and I thought it was a great idea. And I can't tell you the number of residents that went, you know, really upset, you know, at us doing that, because we're losing a lane. It's better than ever. It's, yeah, it's always been cramped, but it's an attractive, much more attractive than that three. And it has, you know, it it impacts the flow-through traffic. People, instead of cutting through, think, you know, there's not that ease of going through anymore that was before. So I'm just saying, everything that we do, you gotta understand that people don't like change, you know, and it's.
Oh, no, for sure.
And it's, you know, and you still go ahead with the plan. But right now, I think you've brought up an extremely good point, is accessibility on the circle with the changes that are taking place, that are about to take place, that, you know. It, the access, pedestrian safety on the circle needs to, the county needs to reevaluate it, and they need to provide for it, because it's not the same situation that, or it won't be the same situation whenever they open up, that um we're used to. And um, and there's no reason that someone living there on the circle, all those units, that they should have to get in their car to go anywhere if they can walk to that area. I I forgot to ask, um, yeah, but we're past the employee, the comments, because we need to move along. Heidi, I forgot to ask our city attorney with all these thoughts. Just some, you know, if there's something that you wanna mention.
I would only be echoing what's already been said. Tammy noted that a lot of these things, the great report, great presentation, a lot of these things are things that we've discussed. It does require money, there, it does require a lot of execution, um, some creativity in in some instances. But it's just a matter of of doing it.
Okay, so JC, what do you see going forward from here? Well, how do you, what do you anticipate? We should, how we should proceed?
Well, in the immediate, I think, and and earlier today, we had a meeting with with Chris, Chiocar Finance Director. We may have, and he's fin- finalizing numbers, we may have money. I'm sorry, we may have money in the ARP, in ARPA funds, but we can address some of these immediately. I E, um, the Canal Street, uh Canal Street, um, parking, now striping, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna. We gotta make more improvements just striping.
Right, right.
The parking lot behind Starbucks, we can do that. So we can, we can hit some of those pretty quickly, depending on what the prices come in at. The other side to it is, um, we can also do um Westwood Drive. We have to pick, because I don't know if we have enough money for all of those projects, but we'd have to prioritize and pick whatever the council would like to see. We can also do the Westwood Drive, the 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 pavers that that we that we have, that we can do the other side as well, and create additional.
Let's, let's try to get the county to, let's, they, they did that for us when they, we asked them to do that when they were doing the circle. They went ahead and threw that in, right?
Was because that was on another project of theirs. It was leftovers, leftover monies from from a project that they kind of saved on.
Okay, so let's.
Paying the same to have the continuation of.
I'll reach out.
I was told by um the um person that Mr. Abasa, um, who took care of the North Royal and the and the South Royal section that we just had redone. He is the person that I was hopeful that we were gonna be able to have him do that. And he says there's no way he could transfer funds from one project to accomplish this for us. So he said, the only way that we can do it is speaking to the director of Public Works. And reaching that office and saying, hey, can you do this for us? I said, it's a county road, so we're halfway there, but it would have to be requested.
And really, what it does is, because it's permeable parking, there, the parking is already being, it's allowed. The parking's, but it's destroying the turf, the, you know, so I think that we can pursue it like that. So JC, maybe you and I can reach out to him, meet with him. There's a few other things that, and I know you were meeting with him regarding the bus situation.
Yeah, but that was a different team.
And also the Oakwood, um, East Drive in Oakwood.
Oh, yeah, and then. I think hopefully we may have, we, we hopefully got that resolved today.
Oh, good, good, good.
Hopefully.
For the, that's for the bikeway on, on.
Yes.
Now, to to finish up some of my, my thoughts here is, once we have on Curtis, you know, we wanna encourage. People to park if they're gonna come to the restaurants on Curtis, along Canal, um, yes, there is a crosswalk. From Curtis onto the circle.
Where the clock is.
Where the clock is, by the cavalier clock. And it's, it's nice because it's a, it has the, the flashing lights. And so it's safe to cross there, but once you get on the other side of the circle, when you wanna get to where the restaurants are. It becomes difficult to cross there. So I'm gonna need, we're gonna need somewhere, and I'm just looking at a, at a, at a. Google Earth image here, um, I have an idea, but I'll see if the county would even consider it. Addition, additional to that, to Councilman Baskett's point, I think we need to look at the crosswalk. Because along, uh, right by, in front of.
Apple Dental.
Apple Dental and and uh, that crosswalk there needs lights as well. Um, I'm, I just feel that if we have the bar and grill, somebody parks on the other side of the canal, get crossing.
That's the most dangerous crosswalk we have.
Yeah, because that, that, that's where the cars are coming in from Paliya Drive, you know, really.
Okay, so that, also, that's a county road.
That's.
That enters, so I, we should be able to get the county to provide for pedestrian safety, given that we have all these residents that are living. In that area now or going to be.
Yeah, I, I wasn't at all imagining us footing the bill for that. It's making the requests to the county saying, hey. Can we do this? Can you do this for us? And then we'll be getting put into the loop for the, they'll do the traffic study, see how many, you know, people. Traffic. All they have to do is go out there and take a look and see how difficult it is to cross that intersection. And, and they would hopefully agree, however, they put out the, they, they count cars. So, um, those are the, some of the concerns I see. Um, and some of the projects that we can actually accomplish quicker.
And I wanna remind that there are grants out there, the D E P grants. That I wanna make sure we're applying for them this year for recreation, perhaps for that walk, whatever, because um, the state grants for that. And then also, um, the ones that we were made aware of by our US Congressman. Diaz Ballart of, for infrastructure and all this that, um.
Might be able to use.
We need to, yes, we need to, to tap into all these, um, and I think I sent you something recent, to this week too, of something else. Um, let's really get active in, you know, in pursuing these grants because obviously, um, we're talking about a lot of money here. And um, the grant funding and and very often, I know in the past with the first bike path we ever built on the um. Curtis Bike, uh Curtis Parkway. Um, the money that we got, the first money that we got for that, which was only twenty-five thousand to build that entire Curtis Parkway in nineteen ninety, it's amazing. Um, we were able to apply for subs- I wasn't on the council, but I was on the committee. Subsequent grants using, they would have to, requires to have matching grants and we kept using that twenty-five thousand over and over. And, and it was allowed. It wasn't, you know what I'm saying? It was like, yeah, you know, you've got this. And so there's a lot of, I don't know how things have changed now, but. Um, we're, we gotta get really creative with, because there's a whole bunch of, of parks, of sections here that, um. Then in canals, I, I know what I wanted to ask with this parking canal, you know, uh, what is it called? Esplanade. Or Canal Long Esplanade. There is um Canal Bank along there, which is a grassy area. Are you familiar? It's part, I think it's in.
It's on the edge.
Okay. It, would that be, I, and I know we're right by the canal, we probably have to put barriers in there or something, but would that be? No, Liz is like shaking for public parking.
No.
Okay.
No.
I know we've had issues in the past, but I mean, with a guard rail and, yeah, okay. I'm just driving around looking at every spot possible for public parking that, you know.
If no one lived here.
Okay, JC, so how do you suggest, how do you foresee pursuing this with the parking management plan and? And I know we've done a lot tonight, so, um, maybe at the next council meeting, you could kind of. Give us your thoughts and we can discuss it. We can have it as a discussion from, it's hard to make this, you know, decisions, right? Well, we're in a workshop anyway, we can't vote, but to make decisions when we've been fed so much information.
That's, that's, we can have that discussion. I will say, when, when talking about hiring employees and personnel. Um, that if, unless we establish parking fees, like you pay to park. That, those positions need to be funded out of the general fund and I will tell you, it's tight. Um, so. Think of you, we'd have to think about that option as well. Um, the.
And perhaps right now we can start as, as a signage of designating these places and then later enforcing them. You know, down the road, we'll hire people to enforce them if people aren't following them or with the assistance of, you know, the police doing. I know how you do with the speeding and stuff, you know, at times targeting certain situations. Um, and that would be a way to, to start until we can do the F T Ds, F T S for.
So, so when I saw that, I was, you know, it concerns me because we're trying to. You know, manage a budget that is already tight and to add two, two heads, two bodies, it makes it even tighter. Um, the, as far as the, the projects, um, I'll, I'll talk to Liz. We can get, put some numbers behind it and let her, you know, I have some thoughts. Um, so we can see how, how far we can stretch the ARPA dollars. Or if we can, or if there's something that we can apply for grants, we do that as well. Um, so let me talk to Liz and I'll give the council a little update on, on.
Let's put it on the agenda, Juan, for um, the next council meeting as, and then we can, all of us can kind of. Through, through the chair, yes.
I just want, I mean, there's gonna be a moment in time, which is coming very soon. At one point, we are going to have somewhat of a paid parking system. It's inevitable that we're gonna evade that. I mean, I, I see it coming. Whether we like it or not, there's gonna be, whether it's gonna be overnight, whether you could uh park by the hour. Definitely make it more pedestrian friendly. I've been here all my life too, and I honestly, I don't even cross the circle because I think that's where my life is gonna end. But anyways, um, actually I saw kids playing football today. I wanna, and I, I want them to play, but I, I was just like nervous. Because if the football goes flying over traffic or it could cause an issue and it was just nice to see them play. I didn't say anything, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. Because I don't want anybody to get hurt. Um, but I like to entertain or if we can uh meet with. This parking director from the city of Miami Beach, her name is Monica Beltrane. And she seems to be a wizard at this. She may be able to give us a, um, her perspective on. How she approached this in, in phases, um, just like as you were saying, Vicky, uh, by phase. Because it may be that we have five favorite phases, but it may be, but we only use three because it works. So we don't have to get so um stringent. So we may, you know, we may skip a step here or there. But I definitely like to tap into people of, of, of knowledge and experience with this because this is very new to us. And um, we could maybe, I don't know, just kinda work with uh directors, uh, parking directors that have already dealt with this. I'll reach out to Coral Gables. I know that there's a headmaster there and see, um, you know, a, a friendly lunch conversation to see how we can approach. Phase one, two and three, or what their experiences have been, because a lot of these cities never had paid parking. I know the city of Miami Beach didn't have, and then she came in and they established because the density in Miami Beach from years back to now. Increased dramatically and typically the paid parking systems came with density increase. It, it comes with its territory. Um, I don't know if we wanted to touch on the topic of. It has nothing to do with this workshop. It was just an item that I didn't touch base last time.
Go ahead because that had to do with parking. No, do you want to discuss it now? Because we're here.
I'll give it up to the council. Okay, we can, let's push.
What do you prefer? It's your item, so we're open to either way.
Um.
Mayor.
It's, yes, oh, we can't because it's not on the.
It's not.
Yeah, the, the, the meeting was noticed to discuss just the parking study. Um, okay, I, I realize that it's generally related, but.
I know, it's just, I think it just ties in because I was looking at the report. I was waiting for the report to come through to see if it tied into maybe the residential aspects. Like the multifamilies, because we do have a lot of multifamilies scattered throughout and a, and a, and a good population of that close to the town center. So that's all going to feed together. Um, so we have a lot of residential off-street. Not official parking, should I say, and I, uh, I just, you know, it causes an overflow. Into the issues that we have, which we're trying to accommodate for turnover as Councilman Fajad and the rest, uh. Councilman Santino has, has been stressing from, I think you're campaigning, was we wanna see our businesses thrive and succeed. But I can tell you right now, I've been here all my life and I do not expect to park in front, in, in fact, I like to try and get a little walk where I can. But I'm not gonna walk, you know, five blocks away. So I will go around in circles a couple of times to see if we, and I understand that turnaround that we're looking for. Right? I may, no, maybe do a circle for five minutes or so, but I'm telling you, I'm doing a circle for at least ten minutes, at least during lunchtime. Um, and then my experience towards the church area where people are not parking on those parallel parking. It's because I think they're actually using the, the parking space. There's like a, a big parking lot there. It's not official parking, but hey, people use it, right? Um, they haven't given us any issues with it. But uh, the multifamily residential uh is causing a, a big overflow on. Off-street parking on, on public right of way, sorry, on the city soil parking. And what, what's happening is it tapping into the affordable housing and whatnot. We have over occupancy and a lot of these uh multifamily um properties. Which are now causing an uptick of, of parking distress. So I'm gonna just leave it like that and then we'll go over it.
Okay, just put it on the count.
Yeah, I will.
For next.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Make a comment.
Yes, um, to, to, thank you, Mayor, to uh Vice Mayor Bravo's point. Um, I think meeting with Miami Beach is a good idea. Um, in one of my previous cities, um, we had. A, a parking rabbit, parking enterprise fund where we had paid parking. We built the parking garage and, you know, to service the business district. Because it was kind of similar to here, um, very limited parking. They wanted to encourage restaurants and retail. Um, and we identified a, a surface lot where we can build a parking garage and, and which we did. Um, my point is that when, when we, when, when I started there, we had the meter heads with the coins. Then we went to the pay, to the, to the, the, the master meter stations and then to pay by phone. And there's flexibility. I don't want people to freak out. There's flexibility on the city side. You can say, hey, the first hour is gonna be free, maybe the first thirty minutes. You know, for people that are gonna come in and out and do something real quick. The whole point of, of the payment is to keep. Um, the traffic moving, keep the cars moving in and out, keep the spaces fluid. And so nobody parks for the, for the whole day. You have options there. You can sell parking passes, you can sell, you, 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 you can do a bunch of things. You can set the hours so that you don't charge on the weekends. I know in, right, where I was previously, we didn't charge in the evenings. Um, because the offices would be closed, the, the salons and, and those types of business, the doctor would be closed. So there wasn't really a parking issue in the evening, so the restaurants took advantage of that and they provide, they, they, they use the parking spaces there. Um, so there are options, um, so it shouldn't be feared, but the, the goal is to, I guess. Keep the spaces open or not open, but moving and so to accommodate, hopefully the businesses that we want coming in.
You'll be chairman, to, to piggyback off on that, when, when we have more structured parking, I think it just promotes more safety overall, right? It provides safety. People don't think about that, but it does provide safety. Um, because you won't have, you know, random cars that can just park there for days and you're like, oh, do they live there or do they not? You, you start learning habitual parking, especially if you live in an area, just like your neighbors, you know what cars they drive, right? So you start learning habits and who's parking and what's strange. So it's gonna kind of contribute to, I think, a little bit better security. But the paid parking system, whatever it may be, it's, it's a fund to help us reinvest into our parking system. Whatever it is that we want to implement, because like you said, our, our, our resources are very limited. So to be able to help even our departments that are gonna help us execute this, we may need an extra head or two. But we also have to think of, like you say, it's always a funding. So where we start where we need. So the first step may be to enforce all, already the ordinances that the city has, which is. The do not parking signs, they've been there for years. They know it's there for years. I don't think that's something that we need to. We can go ahead and say, hey, we're gonna start doing whatever, but I think that's something that can be started tomorrow. So that we can start generating revenues to start throwing into our plan. Um, and that's a good point. And I just, um, it's gonna take time, but I think we could do it.
Let me just ask you with what you're saying and with the pay for parking, um, I think it's great. You're gonna look into it, I would say. Well, we, we need to, you know, that's gonna take a lot of discussion because I don't think that's, you know, something. I envision that as one of the things where residents are gonna be up in arms, but I wanna get it across to anyone who's listening. We're not gonna start paying, you know, requiring you to pay for parking. We are exploring it like other cities are. So this is just that the, you know, options. And it may be certain times, it may be like our city manager said, that the first hour is free and then later. So all we're doing, I don't want to scare anyone because I can see.
We're not talking about single families. We're talking about just.
Yes, and you know, so it's just something, but it, I just wanted to mention too, um, kind of funny. I don't know if you saw in the Herald this week. I think I told JC in the Herald this week with City of Miami Beach, um, they're closing. It was, did you see that in the Herald? They're closing their parking garages and public parking. The, during spring break, during the two weekends of spring break, March, whatever, more closed totally. So there will be no part, public parking. And in other areas where they're going to have public parking, they're going to have a hundred dollar flat fee to park. You know how, like they have now sometimes for the beach, it's twenty dollars, it's gonna be a hundred dollars during that time. And I was just, they said, there's no, they don't want the, the visitors, the rush, and they go, the only way we can do it is, is. I found that kind of extreme, but, um, because they're charging for parking, so it's revenue generating. And yet the problems are so big that they're saying, we're not allowing it. It was in the Herald. I forget which day this week, but it was pretty interesting.
The safety.
Yes, pretty fascinating. Um.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
When, just to fi- finish the, a point and you, you said it perfectly as far as the paid for parking. I wouldn't think about even doing anything. I think we have to do Canal. Um, fix all the parking that we have, um, and let, let One Town Center open up. And let's see what the impact is. Let's, let's take a look and observe first because we don't, we don't know. And then, and then we can see the true picture and then we can come back and say, all right, maybe we should take a look at it.
No, and, and Councilwoman, I'm, I'm ready, you know, I think any of, any of us are open to listening to it. But um, I can tell you from my standpoint, I see that way down the road, you know, and I'm not saying it.
No, that, that's fine.
But there's a lot of other things that we can do right now, um, you know, with this report. There's a lot here that we can do immediately and, you know, long term. So let's do this. If everyone's in agreement, we'll put it on the agenda for the next city council meeting. JC will, will have some time to digest it, come up with some discussion. JC and, and Tammy will give us some ideas, you know, working with, um, and I wanna thank everyone that's here. You've been fantastic. Um, this report gives us a lot to go on and you're right, the, I. What we don't wanna do is now say we got the report and put it on the shelf. We need to move on it right away because this is doable. This is certainly doable. And it's needed. Okay, so with that, um, is there? Anything? And I know there was a gentleman, I, I, I have an open time for someone to talk and that's it. This isn't a. It's, no, let me just explain. We have, so an open time for everyone to talk. And that's it. You know, when I open it for public meetings, so it's not like back and forth. However, because you are like one of the last people here. I will give you two minutes to give your comments. Right, right here, right here. No, but it was.
I raised my hand three times and, but anyhow.
It's only when I ask for public comments.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, but two minutes, please.
The whole thing in your, your report was fantastic. Easy things, like you said, low hanging fruit, enforcement. We have not enforced our parking for a long time. We haven't forced, enforced our speeding for a long time. The crossways, we're talking about safety, they're unfortunate. If you put your foot out, they're gonna run you over. We haven't enforced it. So to me, that's a low, a low hanging fruit that we need to do it. I realize that our police department is kind of restricted in certain ways because of manpower, but. What can we do to your work that we need to do more? What can we as citizens do? To help you guys push our needs? Because we, it's five of you, enter the city manager and assistant manager, what is the cities, we have a voice, wait the county.
Yeah.
So what can we do if you give us guidance as to what can we do? Who do we reach out to? How can we help you? Other than, and that was the, and then your idea of revisit this in a year from now. The conversation, the, we talked about parking now for many years, many, many. The conversation, we talked about parking now for many years, many, many years. Uh, we used to have enforcement, the full-time employee, the little guy in the golf cart marking the tires. I didn't, well, years ago, I've been here since nineteen sixty-five. No, I'm married sixty, sixty-five. So I've seen a lot of the changes. We, those things that we gathering away for, from, that are in our structure. So that is all. I, I'm here, I'm a citizen. I'm asking you guys to represent me.
Why don't you state your name for the record?
Oh, Armando Ramirez. Okay, uh, I spoke with you before, uh, Bravo, welcome to you. Councilman Santino, never had the pleasure to meet you, uh, but we are citizens here, so it's just like we asked you to represent us. Let us know how we can help you. That's just a simple, a simple thing.
If you wouldn't mind, go ahead, since you wrote so that the city clerk has a record, I'll let you um, write your name and that way we have a record of everyone who spoke. Okay, if there's nothing else, thank you again to everyone who's here and this meeting is adjourned.